...meeting. Director, do you want to give a quick update before we start on technology? Just to make sure this works.
So it's our understanding that there was a power surge here earlier today. I don't actually know what that means, but it sounds ominous. And so be patient with us. We've installed temporary microphones. And it's really important not to turn your microphone on while someone else's is on, or else we don't know what happens. But just kidding. Lisa, is there any other instruction?
The microphone on the podium will have a staff member that is assisting with turning that one on and off so that we can make sure that it's not also feedbacking. I think that's it.
All right, thank you. So our first item is the adoption of the agenda. And we have a current version at our desk. I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. The next item is the approval of the November 18th, 2021 minutes, which were emailed to us earlier. Motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. The next item is recognition of council members. And I understand that some council members may be here speaking on the redistricting as well, so I will give you a chance to speak now, or if you want to wait until that comes up, that's an option too. Councilman Duffel? Yes.
I feel very special. I want to speak in favor of item number 25, which is a SP, regulatory SP, very unique in our neighborhood, but it's for a wild animal refuge center. The lady that has advocated for this is passionate. It's regulated by the state. It stays as ours 40, but it is, we've had two community meetings. And in both community meetings, at first, there was some confusion in terms of our first zoning request, but now it's a regulatory SP. I checked with everybody in our last community meeting last week. We had 25 to 30 on. Everybody was in favor. One person misunderstood it, but then after I talked it through, they weren't in favor. So I know it's a tentative yes, but I wanted to just speak in favor of it and appreciate your help. Thank you. Any questions for me?
Nope. If it stays, or if it goes forward on consent, then that'll be great. And if not, if we have questions, we'll ask them.
Thanks very much, guys. First chance, I've had a chance to come in front of you, so thank you.
Thank you, welcome. Let's see, Council Lady Evans?
Good afternoon. I've got three items before you this evening, 23A and 23B. I would like to speak in support of. It's a PUD cancellation and specific plan. I do not believe that anybody has sent in any emails or called, but just in case anybody has, I do want to speak in support of it. I have one commercial property owner that's affiliated with this PUD who has more questions. She has worked with the developer to go ahead and move forward through planning today. And then we're going to regroup with the commercial property owners that are in this area for the cancellation and for the specific plan. And then on item number 40, Kingsley Park, I do have a resident who will be here to speak for that item. But this is one of those ones where it's not probably going to make everybody happy because in the end, we had a number of community meetings about this particular property. Looking at doing an SP, we couldn't get the community support to be able to do that. So the owner is going forward with their existing entitlement with a cluster lot subdivision. I think overarching, the residents are concerned about the subdivision really related to two things, storm water management. And so you may hear that be discussed. And then also a step street that goes into a neighboring subdivision. And so they recognize that there's not a lot under my control anymore, but here to speak likely against the subdivision this evening. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Councilman Rosenberg? Oh, I'm sorry. No, no particular order. We just sort of wrote the names down as we saw people.
They like me more. I'll sit down. Thanks, y'all. It's good to see y'all. I'd like to mention briefly, item 18, Stevens Valley is up tonight. Staff recommendations to approve with conditions. Just want to share that there was a community meeting with a large neighborhood next door some time ago. It wasn't particularly well attended, and there was no opposition expressed at that meeting. So the other thing I'd like to talk about is redistricting. First of all, I hope that Greg gets a vacation on the other end of this. He's had to deal with an awful lot of puzzle pieces and personalities. So thank you, Greg, for that. And Lucy and George for all your work on it. I really appreciate the way our, my district ended up getting drawn. My one small census block sized request is related to a census block that is bounded by I-40 on the south, Highway 70 south on the east, Newsome Station on the west. Because of how census blocks are, this includes a small commercial area off the exit of I-40, some large lot homes along 70 south, a pretty rural-ish neighborhood on Newsome Station, and the property where the new high school is going. It's gone back and forth between District 22 and District 35 and various revisions. And no matter which one it lands in, populations will be on target for 22 and 35. So my pitch is to include this in 35. It unifies the Newsome Station community, ensures that the Newsome Station, Marymount Acres neighborhood is not landlocked. It puts the high school in the district with the highest population of students that go to that school. The large lot homes in there are more consistent with the character of District 35. And the small commercial area that's off the exit is mostly developed and is fairly stable, although there's one vacancy in there. So I'd appreciate your consideration when it comes up of putting that census block in 35. And thanks so much for your time. Thanks.
Thank you. Council Lady Styles? Sorry about that.
No worries. Thank you very much, and thank you for allowing age to go before beauty. Thank you. So, good evening. Thank you so very much. I am here to speak about redistricting for District 32. There is an amendment in your packet. It's number four. I am asking for your support. The reason why Amendment Four works best? It allows centry farms to stay within District 32. As you know, it's a 330 acre massive project that is ongoing right now. And it would make more sense for it to stay within 32 than be transferred to someone else in the midst of the project. It also gives, the subdivision where I live, 90% of my subdivision is in my district. My neighbors directly across the street from me all belong to District 28. So with this amendment, the entire subdivision becomes part of 32. So I would very, very, very much like your support this evening for C, Amendment Four. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Lady Gamble?
Good evening. Thank you all, first of all, for all of your service here to our city. And I know this redistricting process has been very difficult, but I would like to speak about the redistricting, particularly the map for District Three. I sent a letter to you all last night, and I would like to kind of refer back to that. I ask that you approve Proposal C for the redistricting map for District Three as it currently stands. I feel and the community agrees that the planning staff has done your due diligence. We appreciate all of the sessions, the in-person and sessions that you held throughout the city to gather input from the community about the redistricting process, particularly after the Proposal A. Proposal A, I felt, and most of the community members felt, was not a good proposed map for District Three. It took out several communities out of the district that have, that are similar in nature to the district. It also took out most of the character of the district. It drastically changed the demographic, socioeconomic, and geographical character of the district. Proposal A did. But after the community input, the sessions, the emails, and the second two proposals, we feel that Proposal C better reflects and is a better balance for redistricting for District A. And for those reasons, I ask that you approve the proposed District C map for District Three as it stands. And I'd also like to read a letter that I received from Representative Vincent Dixie regarding the redistricting. He is aware of all of the work that we've done as a community to make sure that we get the redistricting map right. And so he wants you all to know that he offers his support in, for the third Plan C of the redistricting map for District Three. The community and the council member have worked very hard to get the map in its current form. Plan C is representative of what the community wants and the community needs, and it helps keep similar communities together. And for those reasons, he asks for your support for District Three for the Plan C map to be approved as it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council Lady Benedict?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thanks so much for your work. I think you're going to see an amended proposal. District Seven has had a lot of changes. District Eight in the Madison area has been moved to the southeast where there was more population growth. So we've been looking at things in District Seven. There's been a lot of community feedback, in particular in the Madison area. So I think what you'll see tonight from Mr. Claxton is going to really indicate what I think incorporates a lot of the community feedback, in addition to my experience with neighborhood associations and what their concerns are. So I look forward to seeing that final map. I actually haven't because it's not quite, it was just completed, I believe, in the past 48 or so hours with some changes based on all that community feedback. So certainly here to answer any questions at that time, but right now, I just want to keep my comments short. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Council Lady Porterfield?
Thank you so much. I was not expecting my colleague to be so concise. My colleague usually has a little bit more to say. So thank you all so much. And that was a joke. I love Council Member Benedict. Thank you all so much. I just wanted to thank you all for supporting the indefinite deferral of the PUD cancellation that's on the agenda today for District 29. Our community did have some questions and some concerns, so appreciate your support in indefinitely deferring that item to give our community more time to work with the property owner to determine if we can collectively find an appropriate use for that parcel of land. Also, with the redistricting proposal, there were a lot of concerns about the previous proposal that removed the precinct community from District 29, had a lot of long-term residents in that area that wanted to be a part of the district, that was their community, that was their home. So I really thank Mr. Claxton and everyone from the Planning Department that worked so hard to make sure that they were able to get that area back into District 29 in the current proposal. So I just wanted to thank you all so much for your support in this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And last but not least, Councilman Parker?
Good afternoon. And thank you, commissioners, for being here. And I'm here to comment on the redistricting process and proposal. Definitely want to begin by thanking Greg and the whole team. Looking at this, and from both the big picture and from, you know, my particular district and my communities that I represent, it's such an incredible challenge to try and, we have such small districts population-wise in Nashville, and those boundaries fall along neighborhood lines, and they fall along established community lines. And it's extremely challenging. I've just been super impressed with the work that the team has done. My two priorities, you know, once Proposal C was released, the changes that I was hoping to see were to return East Hill and Rinraw to District Five, which are two neighborhoods currently in the northwest corner of District Five. These neighborhoods have worked together with their neighboring neighborhoods in District Five for years, and have formed a lot of really important ties, and I'd love to see those continue. I'm also going to make a final pitch for including the East Bank study area and the River North project area in the East Nashville council districts. One of the most frequent bits of feedback that I've gotten from the community through this process is that people really do see this as a part of East Nashville. We know that it's slated for a tremendous amount of investment and growth, but we do still continue to see it as part of East Nashville, and people want that political accountability to East Nashville moving forward for those areas. So that's my final pitch. I think that's the last thing I said to y'all when I was here before you, talking about redistricting. And just again, want to thank Greg and the team, and thank all of y'all for your service. Have a great evening.
Thank you very much. Any other council votes?
I don't see any, but I would ask.
Anyone else that we've missed? All right. Thank you all very much. Our next item is Item E, the Items for Deferral and Withdrawal. Lisa, is that, are you?
Hi. So we have the following items for deferral or withdrawal. On page three of your agenda, Item 1A, 2019 CP 008003, North Nashville Community Plan Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 13th, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting. The associated case on page four of your agenda, 2021 SP 059001, Ninth and Buchanan. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 13th Planning Commission Meeting. Item number 2A, 2020 CP 003002, Bordeaux, Watts Creek, Canes Trinity Community Plan Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 13th meeting. The associated case 2B, 2020 SP 022001, Hickory Highlands at Little Creek. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 13th meeting. Item number three, 2020 Z 013 TX 001. It's a text amendment related to an owner occupied short-term rental overlay. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 13th meeting. On page five of your agenda, Item number four, 2018 SP 009003, Sage Run SP Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 13th meeting. Item 5A, 2021 SP 009001, Crescent Lions Head. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. The associated case 5B, 7874P 003, Lions Head Village Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number C, 2021 SP 057001, Marina Grove. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 13th meeting. Item number seven, 2021 SP 072001, 4319 Saundersville Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 13th meeting. And I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. On page six of your agenda, Item number eight, 2021 SP 081001, Oliveri Mixed Juice. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 13th meeting. Item number nine, 2021 SP 095001, 2600 Dickerson Pike. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 13th Planning Commission Meeting. Item number 10, 2021 SP 096001, 1301 Second Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 13th meeting. Item number 11, 2020 Z 119 PR 001, a rezoning in Germantown to various NS districts. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 13th meeting. On page seven of your agenda, Item number 12, 2021 S 238001, Bowles Property Subdivision. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 13th meeting. Item number 13, 2021 S 24001, re-subdivision of Lot 5 Craighead Lands. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 13th meeting. Item number 15, 2021 S 227001, re-subdivision plat, Lot 364, Plan of DT McGavick. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 13th meeting. Item number 16, 2021 Z 018 TX 001, a text amendment related to the bar or nightclub use. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 13th meeting. On page eight of your agenda, Item number 19, 2021 SP 067001, West Side Retreat. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 13th meeting. Item number 20, 2021 SP 068001, South Street North. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 13th meeting. On page nine of your agenda, Item number 24, 2021 SP 088001, Zero Tuggle Avenue. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 13th meeting. On page 10 of your agenda, Item number 26, 89P 031002, Smith Springs Commercial PUD Cancellation. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number 28, 2021 Z 114 PR 001, a rezoning on Crutcher Street. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 13th meeting. Item number 29, 2021 Z 118 PR 001, a rezoning on Buena Vista Pike. Staff recommendation is to defer to January 13th meeting. On page 11 of your agenda, Item number 33, 2021 Z 128 PR 001, a rezoning request on Watts Lane. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 13th, 2022 meeting. On page 12 of your agenda, Item number 36, 2021 S 183001, re-subdivision of Part of Lot 40, Plan of Clifton. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely.
Lisa, you said item, after 5A and 5B, you said Item C, and I think we meant Item Six, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then Item 16?
Yes.
That's also on the deferral?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so let me read this back to you, make sure we have it right. Items 1A, 1B, 2A, 2B, 3, 4, 5A, 5B, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 15, 16, 19, 20, 24, 26, 28, 29, 33, and 36.
That's correct.
That's a long list. Okay. Commissioners, you've heard the list of items for deferral or withdrawal. Do I have a motion to approve? That's the second. Any discussion? All in favors? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is the consent agenda.
As items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items, unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the items be removed from the consent agenda. I'm going to go through and read the item numbers that are tentatively on the consent agenda. If you are here in opposition to any of the items that I read off, please raise your hand so that the item can be presented. If I can have some staff members keep a lookout, the speaker sort of is blocking my view tonight, so let me know if I miss anyone. Potential items on, or items on the tentative consent. Item number 14, 2021 S 218001, a plat on Riverside Drive. Is there anyone here in opposition to Item 14? Item 14 will be on consent. Item number 17, 2022 Z 001 TX 001, a text amendment related to materials. Is there anyone in opposition to Item Number 17? 17 will be on consent. Item number 18, 2015 SP 013004, Stevens Valley SP Amendment. Is there anyone here in opposition to Item Number 18? Item Number 18 will be presented. Item Number 21, 2021 SP 08001, Cauthern Property SP. Is there anyone here in opposition to Item Number 21? Item Number 21 will be on consent. Item Number 22, on page nine of your agenda, 2021 SP 082001, the Preserve Lot 2 SP. Is there anyone here in opposition to Item Number 22? Item 22 will be on consent. Items 23A and 23B, 2021 SP 085001, 5772 Old Hickory Boulevard SP, and the associated PUD cancellation. Is there anyone here in opposition to 23A and 23B? Those items will be on consent. Item Number 25, 2022 SP 001001, Jocelyn Hollow Court SP. Is there anyone here in opposition to Item 25? 25 will be on consent. Item Number 27, 2021 Z 109 PR 001, a rezoning on Bridgeway Avenue. Is there anyone in opposition to Item 27? 27 will be on consent. Item Number 30, 2021 Z 124 PR 001, a rezoning request on Buena Vista Pike. Is there anyone in opposition to Item Number 30? 30 will be on consent. On page 11 of your agenda, Item Number 31, 2021 Z 125 PR 001, a rezoning on Witsit Road. Is there anyone here in opposition to Item Number 31? 31 will be on consent. Item Number 32, 2021 Z 126 PR 001, a rezoning on Great Circle Road. Is there anyone in opposition to Item 32? 32 is on consent. Item Number 35, 2021 S 072001, Mossman Heights Subdivision. Is there anyone in opposition to Item 35? 35 will be on consent. Item Number 37, on page 12 of your agenda, 2021 S 207001, Donigan Subdivision. Is there anyone in opposition to Item 27? 37, I'm sorry. 37 on page 12 of your agenda, 2021 S 207001. 37 will be on consent. Item Number 38, 2021 S 21001, Zero Brick Church Pike Subdivision. Is there anyone in opposition to Item Number 38? 38 will be on consent. Item Number 39, 2021 S 215001, 2311 Lloyd Avenue. Is there anyone in opposition to Item Number 39? 39 will be on consent. Item Number 40, 2021 S 220001, Kingsley Park. Is there anyone in opposition to Item Number 40? Item 40 will be presented. Item Number 41, on page 13 of your agenda, 2021 S 239001, Sequoia Valley Reserve Parcel. Is there anyone in opposition to Item Number 41? 41 will be on consent. And Item 42, 7874P 004, Lions Head PUD Raising Canes. Is there anyone in opposition to Item Number 42? Okay. Chair, I'm going to go through and read the captions on those now. So everyone, just bear with me for a moment. 34 was not set on tentative consent? We knew it was being presented? So yes, it was skipped intentionally. Okay. As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. The following items are on the consent agenda. On page seven of your agenda, Item Number 14, 2021 S 218001, Riverside Drive Section Two. It's a request for concept plan approval to create eight... It's a request for concept plan approval to create eight lots on Riverside Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. On page eight of your agenda, item number 17, 2022 Z 001 TX 001. It's a request to amend the zoning code related to materials and corridor design and residential accessory overlays. Staff recommendation is to approve the changes to Title 17. Item number 21, 2021 SP 080 001, Cauthern Property. It's a request to rezone from AR 2A to SP for property located on Old Hickory Boulevard to permit 291 single-family residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. On page nine of your agenda, item number 22, 2021 SP 082 001, the Preserve Lot 2. It's a request to rezone from IWD to SP for property located on Perimeter Court to permit 196 multifamily residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 23A, 2021 SP 085 001, 5772 Old Hickory Boulevard. It's a request to rezone from CS to SP for property located on Old Hickory Boulevard to permit a multifamily development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The associated case, 23B, 674 P 002, Priest Lake Commercial PUD Cancellation. It's a request to cancel a portion of a planned unit development for property located on Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 25, 2022 SP 001 001, Jocelyn Hollow Court SP. It's a request to rezone from RS 40 to SP for property located at 504 Jocelyn Court. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. On page 10 of your agenda, item number 27, 2021 Z 109 PR 001. It's a request to rezone from CS to MU A N S for property located on Bridgway Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 30, 2021 Z 124 PR 001. It's a request to rezone from RA to RM 15 NS for property located on Buena Vista Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve. On page 11 of your agenda, item number 31, 2021 Z 125 PR 001. It's a request to rezone from SP to MU L A N S for property located on Witsit Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 32, 2021 Z 126 PR 001. It's a request to rezone from IR to MU G N S for property located on Great Circle Road. Staff recommendation is to approve, and I would note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number 35, 2021 S 072 001, Mossman Heights Subdivision. It's a request for concept plan approval to create 27 cluster lots for property located on Mossman Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. On page 12 of your agenda, item number 37, 2021 S 207 001, Donigan Subdivision. It's a request for final plat approval to create one lot on property located on Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including variances to the metro subdivision regulations. Item number 38, 2021 S 210 001, Zero Brick Church Pike Subdivision. It's a request for concept plan approval to create 19 cluster lots for property located on Brick Church Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 39, 2021 S 215 001, 2311 Lloyd Avenue. It's a request for final plat approval to create three lots on property located on Lloyd Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. On page 13 of your agenda, item number 41, 2021 S 239 001, Sequoia Valley Reserve Parcel. It's a request to amend a previously recorded plat to remove the Reserve Parcel status. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 42, 7874 P 004, Lions Head PUD Raising Cane. It's a request for preliminary plat and for final site plan appro, I'm sorry, for preliminary plan and for final site plan approval for a portion of the Lions Head PUD Planned Unit Development Overlay District to permit a restaurant with a drive-through. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions with an additional condition regarding access on Post Road. Item number 43, new employee contract for Angela Hubbard, and item number 47 to accept the director's report.
That's quite a list. All right, I'm gonna read it back to you quickly, so we make sure we're all on the same page. So the consent agenda items tonight are items 14, 17, 21, 22, 23A and B, 25, 27, 30, 31, 32, 35, 37, 38, 39, 41, 42, 43, and 47.
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioners? Any, any thoughts? Anyone wanna make a motion to approve that consent agenda? Let me have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carries. So, that takes us to what we are hearing tonight. And the first item is gonna be the 2020 redistricting plan. And then in terms of the other items to be considered, we're looking at items 18, 34, and 40. Okay. So we will turn it over to the, the man of the hour, the man of the year. Thank you, Greg. Everyone said it, but you've done a huge amount of work, and this is, we're honored to have you present this to us tonight.
Uh, thank, thank you so much, commissioners.
We'll give you a minute to let everyone settle down. If I can ask if you're not staying for an item, if you don't mind taking the conversation out to the hall, just so we can start with our agenda. All right, I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Greg Claxton with Metro Planning Department. Before I begin, I do want to acknowledge that this is truly a very large team effort. I'll be presenting tonight, but I'm just, just the one talking right now. In addition to the Advanced Planning and Research Division, we've been supported by most other divisions in the Planning Department, Community Plans, Design Studio, and Mapping, as well as extensive support from ITS, not just on technical matters, communication for the website, but also directly in community engagement, as well as the Legal Department has provided extensive support and the Elections Commission. Before you tonight, we have proposed new district lines for both the Metro Council and the School Board. Just as a reminder, redistricting is the regular redrawing of council and school board district boundaries to reflect unequal levels of growth throughout the county. We undertake it every 10 years. This work is guided by the Metro Charter. It assigns, it assigns the responsibility for redistricting to the Planning Commission and gives the commission six months to prepare a recommendation to the Metro Council. We began our work actually before receiving the census data this year. We started in July, educating the public with, through our website, and taking community input. We received census data in August and began, and provided an overview of how Nashville has grown and changed over the last 10 years, and then began our initial mapping in September, leading to a release of the first draft in October, and extensive community input. We are now undertaking the adoption process. As a reminder, our redistricting criteria, the fundamental thing that we were asked to do is take a look at population balance and get the population of the different districts more close to one another in size. As we do that, we keep the districts relatively compact and contiguous. We try to keep them in line with where they've been historically. We seek to comply with the Voting Rights Act, and we seek to keep communities of interest together. By and large, that is neighborhoods. No map will perfectly balance all criteria, although we strive to do all of these as well as we can. I want to take a moment to talk through, in a little bit more detail, the approach that we've taken to comply with the Voting Rights Act. Early in the process, we worked with legal to set a clear baseline understanding of the requirements of the Voting Rights Act, as well as to avoid racial gerrymandering. The Voting Rights Act calls on us to avoid diluting the ability of minority communities to elect representatives of their choosing based on how we draw district lines. At the same time, we are prohibited from drawing district lines based solely on the race of the people within the districts. That's a fine line to walk. Generally, best practices are to seek to align kind of the demographics of the district with the underlying communities that you have. And so, as we've gone through this, as we've prepped, as we've talked to the public, as we've listened to the public, one of the things we've sought to do is recognize the distinct minority communities throughout the county, many of which have strong ties to specific council districts. These vary from place to place, so we have distinct predominantly African-American communities in North Nashville, in Bordeaux, in Parkwood, in McFerrin, and Cleveland Parks. We also have very distinct diverse communities, particularly in some of our suburban areas, but also the neighborhoods around Wedgewood, Houston, Edge Hill, and Chestnut Hill, Antioch, Paragon Mills, and other communities like this. So we've sought to draw district lines that reflect the underlying communities that make up Nashville. As we got, we're preparing for this, we also met with or reached out to several different community organizations, including the NAACP Nashville Branch, the Urban League of Middle Tennessee, the Equity Alliance, and the Tennessee Immigrant and Refugee Rights Coalition. Before we got started, we briefed them on what our process would be, what community engagement opportunities would be. And we also provided them internal access to the redistricting software that we use. So they were able, if they had the opportunity, to take a look at the underlying census data that we were working with as well. In terms of community engagement and transparency, our goal has been to provide as much background material and district information on our website to support transparency. We have put up interactive viewers. We have put up PDF maps with detailed demographic information, as well as Excel files with current and historical data. And then, as we engage the public, we hosted a number of community meetings, very intentionally focusing those opportunities on Southeast Nashville, Madison, and Bordeaux. I'm now gonna walk through how the demographic makeup of districts have changed from 2011 to the current proposal. So this map, I'm gonna spend a little bit more time on this, explaining all of the different things that are going on, and then walk through how that has changed over time. So we're showing two concepts here. One is a majority demographic district, so a majority black district or a majority, majority white district. This is based on pure demographic numbers, 50% plus one. The majority black districts are shown in blue, the majority white districts in gray. We're also showing a, a, a concept called a plurality district, which is a district without a majority, race or ethnicity. But we've identified what the largest group within that is. We think that's a useful concept for understanding the patterns of, of demographics in Nashville and for these districts. And so you can see the plurality white districts in the hatched gray. In this map, a plurality Hispanic district in green, and then a plurality black district in hatched blue. And so in 2011, the last time we went through redistricting, at the time these maps were adopted, Nashville had six majority African-American districts and one plurality African-American district. I'm now gonna show the same districts, the current, in, in, the currently adopted council districts, but updated to show the effect of how people have moved throughout the county. In 2020, the current council districts, we saw a reduction to three majority African-American districts and three plurality African-American districts. We saw an increase in other plurality, plurality districts as well. So this is only the effect of demographic changes in the county. It does not reflect new district lines. I'm now gonna show the first proposal that we released, Proposal A. In this map, we show an increase to five majority African-American districts and three plurality districts. Again, we think that this generally corresponds to the underlying patterns of where folks live throughout the county. We also saw an increase from one to two plurality Hispanic districts. And then last, the current proposal, Proposal C. In this proposal, we saw an addition of District 5 as a plurality African-American district. That is very much kind of on the line. It's kind of 42%, 43%. One of the amendments that we have for you tonight would shift that, tip that back the other way to 42%, 43%. So it would shift to a plurality white district. But we wanted to, to convey to y'all kind of how we've looked at and tried to understand these districts from a Voting Rights Act perspective, and how we think we are achieving the goals of that in terms of reflecting the underlying communities. I should also say, and I apologize for not mentioning this earlier. In addition to understanding kind of the functioning and the importance of the majority black districts that we have, District 1, 2, 3, and 21 especially, which have been longtime majority African-American districts, and we've also recognized the importance of the southeastern districts in terms of proportional representation on the Metro Council. While not majority African-American districts, they do have a sustained track record of electing African-American representation, which we think is vital to the, the council. And so with that, I'm going to introduce the current proposals. This is the current school board in the current, currently functioning school board districts. You'll recall when we briefed you in November, we had Proposal B on the table. Since then, we released Proposal C, which had a small number of minor shifts, the district line between District 5 and District 9, incorporating most of the Norman Binkley Elementary School attendance zone in District 7, which is capturing more of that very diverse New Orleansville corridor, I-24 population. And then to accommodate that, we had a shift of the Burkett Road communities into District 2, partly in anticipation of a new school, and then shifting some Bell Road communities back into District 6. This map has been out for the past week. We do not have any proposed amendments for the school board map. On the current, on the council districts, again, these are the current council districts. When last we talked, we had Proposal B. There were a number of comments that we highlighted at that time along in Madison, East Nashville, and around District 16 and District 13 and District 28. Those are where we focused efforts in Proposal C. We had a large number of comments around District 3 and District 1. We have not changed that map, although we do have that as an amendment for you to consider tonight. All right, I'm now gonna walk through the amendments that we have and which of these we are recommending. Some of these are very minor changes. Some of these are very extensive, so please bear with me.
Excuse me. Greg, just to clarify, you're not necessarily recommending all these amendments. These are questions that we got that, either from commissioners or others. I just want, I know this is a lot of information, and I want to make sure we're being super clear. So if you can clarify what these are, that would be great. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay. Thank you. Yes, these are amendments that we have prepared, and we are recommending some of them, and I will identify those as we go through. So to start with the simplest one, we inadvertently put part of the airport runway in a different district from most of the airport. This doesn't have an impact on redistricting, but it is useful to keep, you know, administratively, to keep the airport as much as we can in one district. So we are recommending this modification to District 13 and District 28. For this one and for the rest of them, we'll show the, the population change. As you can see, it shifted five people, which had no significant impact on the demographic makeup of these, these two districts. All right, the second one, more substantively, includes an array of changes in East Nashville and Madison. This is primarily responding to requests to retain East Hill and Run Raw neighborhoods within District 5, although we have identified opportunities to make other improvements as well. I'll flip back so you can take a look, and then forward again. In this map, we have successfully gotten East Hill and Run Raw into District 5. We've also reoriented communities on the northern end of District 5 around Briarly Parkway, so that communities that are closer to Gallatin Pike are within District 7, which is more oriented along Gallatin Pike. And then districts that are closer to Dickerson Pike are within District 5, which has a very extensive portion of Dickerson Pike within it. As I mentioned earlier, this does shift the demographics of District 5 slightly. You can see the, the You can see the before and after in the percent white and the percent black, from about 42% and 43% to 43% and 42%. We don't believe that this has a substantive impact because it is so closely balanced, but it is, it is a shift we wanted to make everyone aware of. This doesn't make any districts into, out of compliance with any other factor. We had a number of requests related to keeping neighborhoods together or improving boundaries. The, and I'll walk through these in a little bit more detail, but very generally, we heard requests to keep Tomorrow's Hope, a predominantly African-American, at the edge of District Twenty-One. Within District Twenty-One, we had a request to rely more on West End as the boundary between District Twenty-One and District Eighteen. We had a request to unify the Green Hills UDO within District Twenty-Five, where it has traditionally been. And then we had a collection of neighborhoods near Old Hickory Boulevard and Seventies South that were all kind of different subdivisions with Devon in the name. They meet together, so we tried to reunify those, even though they split Old Hickory Boulevard. All of these together required a very complicated set of very small changes between these districts. So I'm going to walk through these in slightly more detail. So starting at the top, we, as I mentioned, sought to get Tomorrow's Hope back into District Twenty. This is near Centennial Boulevard, and we wound up pulling back to the original District Twenty-One, District Twenty boundaries through here. Moving southeast of there, we sought to get a little bit more of the Ackland Park, Ackland Park Drive, West End neighborhood into District Twenty-One, again, where it had been previously. We restored the boundary of West End between District Twenty-One and District Eighteen, and then had a few minor adjustments to the District Twenty-One and District Nineteen, District Nineteen and District Seventeen, and District Seventeen and District Eighteen boundaries. We think that these are all very, very minor changes and don't represent a substantial shift for any community. In addition, because of the change for District Twenty, we had to find a little bit more population for that district. District Twenty already includes some neighborhoods along Hillwood Boulevard, so we brought that one block south from Hillwood to Wilsonia and Summerly. Again, our hope is to keep a part of a district with a voice within the district, you know, just expanding that a little bit, rather than having someone, someone who's otherwise disconnected from the district being added in. Further south, there, oh, I'm sorry, I had one more. At the boundary between District Thirty-four and District Twenty-three, we had, I'm sorry, District Twenty-four and District Thirty, Twenty-three, we brought those back to Woodmont, so that's a cleaner boundary. South of that, there was a small notch that we had pushed District Twenty-three into District Thirty-four. We were able to clean that up and use the Belle Meade city limits. We unified the Green Hills UDO within District Twenty-five. We had to shift the population slightly within Burton Hills. And then we returned the neighbors of Granny White into District Thirty-four. On the other side, the southwest end, those are the Devon neighborhoods that we've reunited within District Thirty-four. This is shifting the boundary from Old Hickory Boulevard to Hicks and Collis Jean. And then to make up for that population, we have shifted District Twenty-two up to Charlotte Pike on the top end. This is Charlotte Pike and Sawyer Brown. That's where District Twenty-two had previously been for a portion of its district, so that's kind of keeping it within the folks who had previously been within District Twenty-two, keeping them there. So far, and then very modest changes to populations and demographics on all of these, they are all still compliant with overall population balance. And then, as Councilmember Stiles mentioned, we had a request to restore a complex project to the council member who has overseen it. Up to now, these are all amendments that we recommend. The airport, the East Nashville and Madison, the complex set of districts in the southwest in District Twenty-One, as well as this one. We are recommending shifting Century Farms into District Thirty-two, where it had previously been. And again, because it has not yet built out, it has only a very minor impact on the population balance and no substantial effect on the demographic makeup. The last amendment, which we are not recommending, we're recommending remaining with Proposal C, is a corner of District Three and District One at the intersection of I-24, Old Hickory Boulevard and Lipton Pike. Communities on either side of I-24 see this interchange as the gateway to their areas. They are both communities that see it as kind of vital and a part of their community. Both desire for some or all of it to be in their districts. This is what the map would look like, putting it into District One. And then this is the population effect, again, very minor. The districts are all still compliant with population balance, and there's a very minor impact on the demographic makeup. I know that has been a lot to absorb, but our recommendation is to recommend School Board Proposal C to Metro Council, and to recommend Council District's Proposal C to Metro Council with Amendments One, Two, Three and Four. And with that, I am happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. A lot to take in. And, okay. So for the commissioners, we have options.
I wondered if you wanted to open the hearing before entertaining?
Yes, I guess I have to.
And to clarify, so on this one, we held a public hearing last time, and what we noticed to the public is that for this meeting, we would hear from council members or elected officials only, and so that's the expectation. So my advice would be to open it up there, and then if the commissioners wanted to discuss or had questions for the council members, that could be an appropriate way to proceed. I know this is a little unusual, so forgive me for interrupting.
No, 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 thank you. Well, so, okay, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing.
I get to first use mine. So our role, though, is we're going to review it just like we would anything else, and then, you know, approve. Could you explain that part of it, just what we're doing things?
Thank you so much for asking that we clarify the process. And so what we have put in front of you is a proposal, a Proposal C. So that's the proposed map that we're recommending. There are five amendments, some that we are recommending approval of, and one that we are not recommending approval of, for you to entertain during the discussion. At the conclusion of this meeting, what my expectation would be is that we would have recommendations from you about Proposal C and the amendments. Those will go up to council, and council will consider those. This is an unusual process, so ultimately, the decision is with council to approve these or not. They are not allowed by their own rules to, or charter rules, excuse me, to amend what we send up. So it's, that's in the charter, and it, but if they don't accept our recommendation, then there will be a referendum. So it's a rather extreme resolution, which is why it's so important for us to hear from them tonight, get feedback, and you can take that into account in your consideration. Greg, did I miss anything that you, or you would add?
No, that's complete.
Did I address your question? Is there anything else we can add on that point? Okay. Thank you, that helps a lot. So, we're opening the public hearing, but at this point, we will only hear from council members and any other public officials here to speak. And I know that we've already heard from several, but I will bring you back up if you would like to, Councilwoman Gamble?
Yeah, Councilwoman Gamble? Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity to speak again, because this is my first time seeing the amendments. They weren't sent to us or, and they're not available on the website, so I wasn't aware of the amendments until I arrived here today. Looking at what you have presented, Amendment Three, I'm sorry, Two, which shifts parts of District Three, thank you, further south, that's right, thank you, going into District Seven, I think, I'm not quite sure what the reason, and I was trying to listen, Mr. Claxton, thank you for explaining all of that, it was a lot of information to take in, what the reason is, but I suspect that it is to keep a neighborhood together. I know there were some concerns about a community that would have been split on, at that, at that side, at the eastern side of the boundary. And I support keeping that community together, because it is a suburban community, which has similar issues as the suburban communities throughout District Three. And if that is the reason, I do definitely support that amendment. The other amendment, Five, I do not support that amendment, because that is one of the areas, the western border is where we spent the most time on, the community, myself, the planning staff, trying to get it right. As I mentioned earlier, the first proposal shifted that western border so far east, it's not even on this map right here, you can't even see it. And it drastically changed, as I said earlier, the demographics, the socioeconomic and the geographical character of the district. It took out historically black suburban neighborhoods that wanted to stay together within the district. This proposal brings those communities back into District Three, keeps them with the other suburban communities that have similar issues, that have worked together for many years. And it also gives us a dividing line between the rural area of White's Creek and the suburban area of White's Creek. I think the first proposal totally took White's Creek out of our, out of District Three, which, like I said, was a drastic change to the character of the district. This proposal brings in the suburban communities within White's Creek back into District Three, and has a more distinct barrier between the rural area of White's Creek and the suburban and commercial corridor that this shows at the I-24 corridor. And that, the community and I both felt that that was a more balanced approach, that everything east of Lipton Pike is more suburban and commercial, and everything west of Lipton Pike, Lipton Pike is where White's Creek High School is. So that would be the dividing line between the rural White's Creek and the suburban White's Creek. And so this is a more ideal and more balanced approach, and I ask that you do not approve this amendment, and the fact that it's not recommended by the planning staff, and I appreciate you all's work on that, because you have talked to the community and understand what the, what the issues are, and I just ask that you all take that in consideration and not approve Amendment Five. But definitely, I support Amendment Two. Thank you.
Chairwoman, may I recommend, just given the complexity of what we're talking about, that we go ahead and ask Mr. Claxton to address the councilwoman's question about Number Two. I think we need to explain the impetus behind that recommendation, so that you all were keeping the concepts together, if that makes sense. Is that?
Thank you, yes. We seek as much as we can to keep related communities together. We certainly seek to avoid splitting neighborhoods, but also dividing out neighborhoods that traditionally work together closely. In this case, this is sort of serving a little bit of a function of keeping them with the neighborhoods north of Du West, but it is also necessary for population balance. So if we were to shift the boundary to Du West, District Seven would become out of balance.
So to clarify, in bringing the East Hill and Renraw neighborhoods back into Five, we had to balance the two districts on either side. And so we heard a lot of community feedback, that there was a desire to bring those into Five, and then District Five became too large, population-wise, and so that was the resolve.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, does that?
Okay.
I think that, can you just clarify, what was the, which is the specific concern, or what, which I, which area in District Three were you asking a question about with this?
That was it. I wasn't sure of the reason, impetus for that. I'm actually not sure.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry about that. Yes, my question was answers as far as the impetus or the reason for the shift in Amendment Two. But to that regard, I don't know what the reason or impetus was for the Amendment Five. And I know it's not recommended by the planning staff, but if, it would be helpful to know what that amendment, if there's any.
Sure, I think it was a request from a commissioner in response to the comments that the public provided on Proposal C.
Okay. And that was outside of the input that we got prior to Proposal C being released, or that was after a Proposal C?
It was both on Proposal C and, or Proposal B and Proposal C.
Okay, okay. Well, again, hearing from many, many community members, attending at least two of the three open house events that the planning staff held, I talked to many community members at those events, as well as emails, phone calls I've sent. We've had at least two meetings, community meetings, about the redistricting map, which are available on my Facebook page, to hear from the community themselves, what they wanted to see and hear. I also sent various, several newsletters, and even sent an email out Monday after the Plan C was released on Friday, just keeping the community aware of what's going on. And I've received emails of support. I may have received about three emails that didn't support C and wanted to revert back to Proposal A, but the majority of the sentiment that I've received from the community, they are happy with Plan C and would like to get that approved.
Thank you very much. Okay. Councilwoman Benedict?
Once again, thank you commissioners for your work, and to the planning staff as well. I know that, I was just thinking, Mr. Claxton, you deserve a month in Tahiti perhaps, or something like that. And of course, Ms. Milligan, you always do. So could we go back to the slide, please, that showed Five? There we go. So this is the first time that I've seen this map, and the initial Proposal A had District Seven, similar to where the boundaries are today, it actually went further down into East Nashville along Shelby Bottoms. What we heard after that was released was folks in Madison, because District Eight was moved to the southeast, Madison really wanted a lot of changes, and so we, I know the feedback that we received at the multiple meetings was, let's do something better with Madison than what was originally proposed. It's just, that's maybe the best way to put it, is just better in regards to the community's feedback. So in Proposal B, we, District Seven was moved over to the west side of Gallatin Pike. The current District Seven is only on the east side of Gallatin Pike. And then it also picked up kind of the new downtown Madison, right, that's being revitalized right now. There was a lot of feedback from people in Madison that said, we want that in District Nine. And so I see that this map, well, Proposal C, I think, actually took, changed that, and this map continues that, that trend, which is what people there were very clear and very vocal about in District Nine. So this does, what, in looking at this, what I like about having both the east and the west side of Gallatin Pike is that there was the UZO expansion that we did in December of 2020. I know we all don't know what's 2020 and 2021 anymore. It was in December of 2020, we did the UZO expansion all the way up to Briarly Parkway, and then council members Van Rees and Hancock and I did the UDO expansion up just north of, up to Myatt Drive, I believe, anyway, at least in that Madison area that this will continue to cover. So for me, when I think about what the community wants, and what I've heard from the community again and again, is that, you know, Northern Inglewood is its, is, is, on the, on the east side of Gallatin Pike, has the larger lots, the character is suburban there. South Inglewood is, is beginning to become more urban. Madison is urban as well. And, and then the west side of Gallatin Pike, interestingly, the first house I ever bought was what is now in this map, District Seven. So, and the second house I bought was in District Seven. So what is on this map? So, you know, this is an area I'm very familiar with, and I think people are familiar with me representing them. This is not about Emily, though, of course, this is about, you know, the communities and, and what, what their needs are, and I do think, as I look at this and I'm taking it in, I And I do think, as I look at this and I'm taking it in again for the, for the first time, this looks like it's going to keep people together. That area just north of Bryley Parkway is a, a, a community that's, again, suburban, larger lots, similar to North Inglewood in some ways. And then the area on the west side of Gallatin Pike, including across the railroad tracks there where it borders District Five, that area, again, has an urban suburban feel that, again, I think aligns with District Seven. When you go down to the southeast side of District Seven, that's South Inglewood, there's been a tremendous amount of redevelopment there. That was when we did the UZO expansion, that was added in to the UZO expansion. So again, I think that this, you know, really aligns with that area as, as East Nashville has continued to grow and develop. That's happening in Inglewood right now. If you drive Gallatin Pike, anytime lately, you'll see, we've got a 96-unit apartment complex coming up, a 28-unit townhome community coming up. And there's more and more development happening on Gallatin Pike. So I think that this is a, this looks like, to me, a good, a good solution that the community, I think, would support if they would have seen this amendment today. So, and, and I do think that the changes in the last 48 hours are absolutely the result of additional feedback. So, those are my thoughts. I don't know that I have any questions for planning. I think they explained it really well. But I certainly would be glad to answer any questions you might have about the neighborhood and the district.
Thank you very much. That was very helpful.
Okay, thanks you guys.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you all.
Councilwoman Styles?
Thank you very much for allowing me to come up again. I wanted, again, to say thank you for you all listening to this process. It has been very in-depth for all of us. And working with Lucy and Greg, I second, third, and fourth that all of you really need a vacation, a hiatus after this process. Forty personalities, it's a lot, working on behalf of our communities. In terms of District 32, I am so appreciative of the amendment to put Century Farms back. I had a community meeting recently and sharing Proposal B and showing that it was not there, and people were very upset. So for this to be able to stay in our community, it's a point of pride at this point. We're very excited about Century Farms and what's happening in the southeast, and this is a huge component. So for it to be able to stay managed in, in one way would be an amazing feat. So I'm going to ask you again if you will please consider Amendment Four and improving the southeast, because this is exactly what that does. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other, Councilwoman Parker?
Thank you all for giving us another opportunity to speak. I'm going to speak in support of Amendment Two. I know that through the various proposals, different neighborhoods were modified in different ways and sometimes split that were traditionally in District Five. And we kind of went around the bend getting feedback from different neighborhoods as it, as we, as we proposed this. So this, I know, was a tremendous lift to be able to keep all those neighborhoods whole and together in Five. Also, I'm super excited to have Page's Branch and Oakwood neighborhoods be sort of unified in one council district. I've been working with Councilmember Van Rees, you know, and, and as much as we try, it's kind of like, well, who's going to the meeting this time? You know, we kind of traded off, but it's, it's really exciting to have, have those together. And, and I've been so focused on neighborhoods, I hadn't really thought much about the corridor representation. But as, as Mr. Claxton pointed out, I think it makes a lot of sense to sort of, once we get north of Trinity, to focus D5 more along the Dickerson corridor, which has a tremendous amount of stuff going on already and a lot of great things coming. And then Gallatin, more focused in D7, north of Trinity, because, again, tremendous amount of stuff going on and a lot of great things on the way. So I would ask the commission to please consider supporting this amendment. And again, thank you all for being here, and thanks to Greg and the team for all your hard work.
Thank you. Any other council members want to speak? Ms. Haywood, oh, Ms. Haywood?
She's the deputy mayor.
Yeah.
My name is Brenda Haywood, and I'm the deputy mayor of Community Engagement, former council member of District Three. Now we have a council member that's a council member extraordinaire. And I'm just so proud to have Miss, Council Lady Jennifer Gamble. You know, it's almost like leaving your child in good hands. And then there are times you leave your child in sometimes even better hands, where District Three has been dealt a hand that's so much better than what I was when I was a council member. So I'm just elated and excited to applaud the commissioners and to applaud the planning staff. I work very closely with the planners and the commissioners. And I just want to say you're doing a beautiful job as it relates to listening and trying to accommodate the council members. I talk to my council lady often, and she is pleased with the plan at this point, and we're pleased. And of course, in every situation, there are those that would rather have their own way. But if you look at the larger picture, we're just really, really pleased. I want to say congratulations for all that you've done. And I just want to say, again, I reiterate and articulate that I applaud you. We're happy with the current plan, and I hope we can move it forward, just as it's written. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, I think with that, I will go unless there's anyone left, go ahead and close the public hearing. But I think we'll kind of segue to this by starting with our council representative on the planning commission. So Councilwoman Withers, to start our open discussion, can I turn to you?
Well, thank you so much to the commissioners and again to Craig, Greg, and all the staff who've spent so much time. I was able to attend three of the four open houses and really enjoyed getting to spend time with some planning staff they don't get to visit with all the time. So that was fun for me. I work with land development all the time, but there are other planning staff that I had not met before, and that was great. And really enjoyed their interactions with the public and their patience and looking at these maps and understanding how sometimes the bizarre ways that census tracts work that include things that you don't think that they would and vice versa. But I appreciate Draft Map C. I know we did have a lot of feedback about it. I was able to, at our council meeting on Tuesday, since we were in a public meeting, to go down the line with our district council members and kind of take a poll of what they were feeling about it. And so in general, I think there's a lot of support on council for Map C. I do appreciate some of the adjustments, in particular. I know Councilmember Russ Bradford is pleased to have all of the airport back in District 13. There are some other things that he would probably like to have in there, like a Metro Animal Care and Control, which he's very passionate about. But, but I think absolutely with the, with the airport, looking at ongoing expansion and all the efforts that are going on with the Airport Authority, growing our airport, it makes a lot of sense to have one council member that's the contact for that. And I think he is excited and does a great job with that. So I wholeheartedly support Amendment One, that did take some area out of District 28. I was able to speak with Councilmember Virture, and she was fine with that. Obviously, there's not a lot of population shift in that. And so Councilmember Virture shared her support with me of Amendment One for the airport. Amendment Two, we've definitely had a lot of conversation about in East Nashville. Of course, the original map that was published kind of split the Cleveland and McFerrin Park neighborhoods, at least partially out of District Five. That was very concerning to me, having been in the East Nashville community a long time. I know how much those neighborhoods in particular are really joined at the hip. Was glad to see each successive map get a little bit better. But sometimes when you, by moving McFerrin and Cleveland all back into Five, it caused another shift for other neighborhoods who were then concerned. And glad to see that we were able to kind of work that out. One of the things that I will say, if you kind of look at that map for number two, one of the things I want to say is that, you know, I think sometimes when you have these neighborhoods that are in the middle of a region, it's really, really hard to keep them all together. On, on the east side of Gallatin, you know, the South Inglewood neighborhood and the Rosebank neighborhood and even the Inglewood neighborhood have, are such large areas that they've never really been able to all be in one district together. And so they're used to being split. And what I will share is that I know there's a lot of apprehension sometimes about having a neighborhood be split or have multiple council members. And I think in my experience, South Inglewood and Rosebank in particular, and Inglewood have traditionally benefited from having multiple council members. It means that a couple of different council members come to their neighborhood. They all get to go to meetings and hear feedback from what's important. That helps council members, if you have more than one, sometimes to join together and prioritize capital improvements budget requests or things like that. And generally, the council members have worked together very, very well, whether it was back when Councilmember Eric Cole was representing. And, you know, you go back, there's this long history of this area being divided into multiple council districts. And it's never really presented a problem to those communities and in fact has been beneficial in some ways. So just want to point that out, that I know that some of our neighborhoods have really expressed a lot of concern about having multiple council members. But for that area, it's, it's a jagged line. It's not that much more jagged than the way it is today presently. And, and I think that, that it works out pretty well, particularly with, in the interest of getting some of the District Five neighborhoods on the other side of Gallatin back together. I think it's a good trade-off and doesn't harm those neighborhoods in any way. Along Cahal, I know one of the things that's kind of gone back and forth at the corner of Porter and Cahal, which is at the southernmost end of that aspect of District Seven, Councilmember Benedict is working with a very large apartment community that is looking at some changes. It's an affordable housing community whose contract is ending. And that she is working very diligently with those community members, as well as the schools that they're zoned to, to try to figure out what is the best future solution for those residents during that change. And so it's one of those things where it looks a little weird on a map, but I think it makes sense that the District Seven council member can continue that conversation. So as that change moves forward in the future, that they, they have still have one point of contact. So that's one of the things that looks a little weird, but it actually makes a lot of sense when you look at the context of a very sensitive community that's undergoing a lot of change right now and having continuity there. So Map Two, I support. From the council's perspective, I really appreciate hearing from Councilmember Gamble. I know moving District Three more or less into Madison is a little bit of a shift. And she has been very gracious in working with Councilmember Van Rees. First of all, I also want to just shout out that Councilmember Van Rees has had the most change of everyone, which is the district going entirely. And Councilmember Van Rees has been such an advocate for Madison and has led with such grace and maturity in helping her neighborhoods to understand how these changes happen and how it could potentially benefit them in the future. So I want to, can't leave without saying that on the council's perspective. For the next one, which is Amendment Three, it kind of captures a lot of different things. For District, I think for District 18, I was able to speak to Councilmember Cash as well as Councilmember Brandon Taylor. Having that boundary be consolidated there on West End helps to keep that sort of Vanderbilt area all within District 18. I know that was really important to Councilmember Cash, to have Vanderbilt and Peabody together in one council district, because that is a very large stakeholder in, in many regards. And so having one council member that is a primary contact for that very large institution is very helpful. The area on Tomorrow's Hope, I think that Councilmember Taylor and Councilmember Mary Carolyn Roberts really couldn't necessarily find, what they would like to divide it at is 44th Avenue, but I think that's one of those where the way the census tracts works, there's just not a clean line at that, the Tomorrow's Hope area. Councilmember Murphy in 24 have been very, very interested in keeping a clean line there along Woodmont Boulevard and the Kinnamanor neighborhood. So I'm pleased to see that that's come back in, right in that area. I think that really helps to keep a pretty consistent identity for 24 on that side of the Woodmont and White Bridge Road community. Some of the other changes are a little bit smaller, but I know the council members appreciate it. Councilmember Russ Polley let me know that he really appreciates the Green Hills UDO all being in one council district. You know, again, when, sometimes actually it works out well for a residential community to have multiple council members, but for like a major commercial center, it can really cause confusion, just about like, who do we call? And who's, who's going to make a decision if one needs to be made quickly? So having that commercial area within that UDO all be, all be within one district is beneficial there. But otherwise, I'm, I think that this Amendment Three represents many more different little tiny pieces than I thought of the, the small tweaks that I heard from colleagues about Draft, Draft Map C. Century Farms, Amendment Four, I think, again, makes a lot of sense. Councilmember Jacovia Dowell, who had represented some of that area before, had really worked with the administration and with TDOT and folks to get that, some of that lined up. And I think that having that, that continuity, again, there, again, I mean, not so much from a residential side, but keeping a commercial, a major commercial project all within one point of, of leadership is important as that sort of relates to the overall global, global mall at the crossings. Keeping those together for one point of contact is, is very important for those property owners and I think TDOT and other government, government agencies. So I support that. District, for Amendment Five, I mean, this is one of those where you have folks with strong feelings on both sides of it. I've, I've heard from, obviously, Councilmember Gamble spoke to this earlier today. Was able to speak to Councilmember Hall. Both council members are supportive of, of leaving things where they are with Lipton Pike. White's Creek, District Three had historically been much more focused on White's Creek. And obviously, it's kind of mostly, was almost moved entirely to Madison. And I know that folks have very strong feelings in particular about conservation and a lot of natural features. And I think that's really, really important. But the redistricting process here is about communities and populations. And I've heard from a lot of the traditionally African-American neighborhoods that they really wanted to stay in District Three. And so when, when I have to kind of decide between those two things, I mean, I'm, I'm going to side with the community groups that want to stay together. Having both council members support keeping them where it's at with Lipton Pike is a pretty good compromise since District Three used to all go all the way to the heart of White's Creek itself. This is a little bit further out. I know that our community members that advocate for White's Creek so, so well are still going to do that. I'm, I'm not concerned that there's any, that having this, being District Three, which it's, I believe it's currently in District Three anyway, but I, I don't know that, that maintaining some of the area in District Three changes any of that per se. I know that the community there will work very closely with the planning department on things and making sure that Metro Stormwater and a lot of those, those metro departments on any proposals that come through. I know that there will be a lot of advocacy there that will be intelligent. But from the standpoint of keeping traditionally African-American communities together that want to stay together, which is, which is an important goal, I will side with, with the Metro Council representatives for the area and urges to keep the line where it was negotiated in Map C. So I think that those are my comments for the things that are before us now.
May I just, in the interest of clarifying, so there were five amendments. Staff is recommending against Amendment Five. Am I, just to be, put a fine point on it, you're recommending that we go with the staff recommendation to not, can I not do a bunch of double negatives? You're recommending keeping the current Proposal C with respect to this Amendment Five, and therefore you agree with staff that we should recommend disapproval of this amendment. Is that correct?
I do, and that, you know, again, that's, that's based on like, observation and communication with council members as well as listening to community members, frankly, on both sides of that debate, but listening to community members just over the years, as well as at the open house.
Thank you.
So it occurs to me that we should have a second process discussion. So Councilwoman Withers did a great job of walking us through each of the amendments, but we sort of can, we don't, and we're going to have to vote on each amendment individually when we, when we finally call the vote. But in terms of discussion and debate, we can talk generally, as well as about the specific amendment. So kind of up to the commissioners whether you want to walk through each amendment separately or want to kind of manage general conversation about the whole process. And we can be a little flexible, too, as we go. But if someone has a strong opinion and wants to walk through each amendment separately, we can. General? Okay, and we'll proceed. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Well, it's a lot to observe because our community and, you know, everybody engaged did a really excellent job. And just reading through the feedback is a work, too, because, you know, 98- is a work too because, you know, 98 pages for the Amendment A and then another 98 pages, the Amendment B, and then another, you know, detailed feedback. So a lot to observe and, you know, a lot to digest. So, but I think I would like to ask a few questions. It was not included in the amendment. I think Councilmember Rosenberg stated like a tiny bitty section. So I think, is it included in this amendment about Highway 70?
It is not included in the amendment as, as we've drafted it. As we were working through, looking at the populations of District 23, District 34, District 22, and District 35, we had a little bit more flex, but we wound up, kind of as we pushed into District 22, it, it reduced kind of our, our ability to flex there a little bit. So we haven't assessed that anew in light of this, this amendment. He was correct. We had it in earlier proposals. It had gone one way and then the other. We, we sort of reverted back to having it in District 22 primarily because it had, had previously been there. So just for consistency and to, to reduce change where we can. That, let me show you real quick where that is. It is this site. It's kind of this weird thing like that.
I see. So seems like a geographically kind of huge area, but not really, kind of population wise does not make much sense. So in that sense, you know, what our option, if we think those tweak up might be the good idea, but if we were to adopt only, you know, Amendment, the option C with recommended amendment, seems like we do not have much choice, or do we?
We.
Our goal was not to limit your choices.
Okay.
So we're just discussing with council and he can, he can, we can talk through it. Essentially, what we would expect to do is vote for the school board first and then entertain each amendment. And then at the end, entertain Proposal C as amended based on the discussion and decision about each amendment. If as the body entertains Amendment 1 or 2 and you want to make changes, then you can propose those as you typically would and see if you have agreement among the commissioners. Does that make sense? So if you have a particular issue that you want to discuss and change the amendment that we're proposing or the package, say pull one of the circles out, then we just need the commissioners to agree with you and entertain that. Legal, do you have any concerns or do you agree with that?
And I would add to that, if there's something that's not in one of these amendments and you want to have it unrelated, it can be voted on again at the end of the suggested amendments.
Okay. But so clarifying that, we can, so we could amend this one thing of Amendment 3?
Mm-hmm.
Is that right?
So, so what we would recommend, because each, so for something like this, if you were to remove one circle, it could throw other districts out of balance. And so if you want to do that, I think we would recommend that we remove, move this to the heel of the agenda and let Greg go and do some crunching and come back and provide you with that feedback. Right, Mr. Claxton?
That's correct. If it's something simple like this, we may be able to assess it during the discussion. If there are multiple ones, we would need time to, during the rest of the meeting. But we can, we can assess that. It makes sure it's compliant with population balance and everything.
We're generally at the, at the margins here on, in terms of what we're, what I mean by that is because we're not looking at wholesale changes in, in the districts, we can probably assess individual changes. Now, if you wanted to put something larger on the table, we may say that that's going to look like a deferral or something like that while we assess it.
So yes, I, I think as a larger picture, I think we are really good with proposed C. And then I think with amendment, we can tweak up and make it much better. That's where I, you know, stance right now. But as far as tweaking, because we hear, you know, additional community feedback via, you know, online comments and also such as council members comment. And I see some of the request from the community that may make sense has not addressed. So, you know, right now I feel like, you know, Commissioner Henry kind of cautioned last time, okay, so we did this and Amendment A and B and posted and the C, and then all of a sudden we are like, okay, we have to, you know, cross the goal. So it seems like a rushing because, but this amendment makes it, you know, last another 10 years. So it's really important, you know, which amendment we approve and we add, or if we forget something, you know, we need to add right now. So to do that, so as far as my question is, school board, traditionally like a current school board is include District 1 to 3 or 5. So school board line and district line is in line? Or how does it work? So is, is it related or a little bit different?
The school board lines and the council district lines are distinct. At one point in time, a few decades ago, when the school board districts were first established, I think they just come, put council districts together. Since then, there's been a move like we did this year, but, but also in past cycles, to shift away from alignment with the council districts to aligning with the, the school clusters. So that the, the sort of, the, the parent stakeholders and the political stakeholders for school board members are as close as they can be.
Okay. So that's good. So since, you know, we do not hear much input on the school board and the school district, and it seems like all the, you know, school board district were fine, you know, based on the input coming from former school board members and so forth. So I am very comfortable with current proposed school board in the district. I have no problem. So when it comes to council, I do have a little bit hesitancy because, you know, all the amendment is good. Amendment 1 makes sense, 2 reasonable, but Amendment 3, you know, all the reason why it is there and shifted makes sense. But since I did not have time to really go through and absorb, so I'm a bit hesitant if it is a right amendment or is this line is a right line. So that's a little bit hesitant on that. And Amendment 4, that's an easy one. I think it's a, you know, supported by community. As far as Amendment 5, I understand the reasoning, but it's little, give me a little bit, you know, pause because overwhelmingly, you know, community, as far as I'm reading, I'm sure there's quiet, silent, you know, support, maybe support with this strange triangle. But overwhelming comment online support removing that triangle. So, you know, just having A versus V, you know, include or not include like a council lady against, you know, some community, I'm a bit hesitant to kind of go there. So that's how I feel. And also another amendment, it was not discussed, is Harpeth Trace, which is District 23. It's a lower portion of Harpeth Trace community. Traditionally, it is included District 34. But that community is literally kind of gated community, like one, you know, community. So they have been wanted to be one district. So I counted only like a 76 parcels. So it seems like, you know, just including that to District 23 kind of makes sense and keep the community together. But since it's not, you know, offered in here, so I'm a bit, little bit, you know, don't want to rush into it.
Well, may, it may be that some of the things you're putting on the table are issues that Mr. Claxton analyzed. So for example, Harpeth Trace is one you looked at. Can you, would it be okay to get that explanation for why we didn't?
Okay, sure.
Sure. And so let me, let me show folks the area that we're talking about. It's kind of, the Harpeth Trace neighborhoods generally is kind of this sort of sawtooth thing where District 23 shifts down into kind of between the Warner Parks. There's a tiny little portion of it. There are a few cul-de-sacs that poke into kind of this area here that's part of District 34. One of the quirks of census geography that we have to use by, by state law is that the blocks, as much as they can, rely on fixed geographic features such as city blocks. And so they are very regular in the urban core where we have kind of a gridded street pattern. They get very large or very complicated in suburban areas, particularly where you have this large park without sort of thorough roads. And so almost this entire thing is one census block with close to, I believe, 2,000 people. So it's, it's, it seems like it ought to be simple to move just a couple of, a couple of cul-de-sacs over, but it brings so many people that it throws the district way out of compliance. We had originally sought to unify those within District 34 in Proposal A. And we got a lot of feedback asking for it to stay in 23. And so we, we weren't able to find a way to both keep it together and keep it in 23. And that, that's why we did not prepare an amendment.
Yeah, that makes sense because, you know, that lower Harpeth is also GSD while upper Harpeth is USD. So yeah, that's kind of makes a difference too. Well, appreciate that explanation. So, yeah.
We were also able to assess the shift for the Councilmember Rosenberg's request. Unfortunately, it puts the population of District 22 too far below the lower threshold. It puts it 1,299 people below the average district size, which means that to make that happen, we'd need to find another about 300 people to add into District 22.
That makes sense. So yeah, all this reasoning and little shift there, shift there kind of makes sense. And really appreciate, you know, thoughtfulness and reasoning and, you know, really appreciate the community kind of voicing the concern. So I think I am okay with it. Only hesitancy I have is Amendment 5. I just, you know, it's just a tough one because I cannot say, seems like recommending makes sense based on the geographic and because seems like north of the Old Hickory Boulevard is kind of rural character. So it seems like, kind of makes sense to go into District 1. And especially population, you know, doesn't shift too much. But at the same time, you know, council ladies are in favor of keeping that. So, but at the same time, overwhelming community support for removing it. So that's why I'm interested here, other commissioners' opinion.
Well, I feel like a lot of my questions were asked. I really appreciate all the council members being here and offering their comments. It was really helpful, particularly as it relates to the Amendment 5. I think that's an, an easy question to have for us commissioners. I appreciate Council Lady Gamble going over that and explaining the rationale behind that. I also appreciate you, Greg, explaining why the Councilman Rosenberg's request, if it were to happen, how it would throw things off. And I guess that's a, a consequence of everything is the butterfly effect. If you start to change something, then everything gets thrown off and then we might be back to not square one, but you know, not at the end of the, at the end of the road. We have seen Proposal C, we have seen some new amendments. And obviously, the new amendments seem to be fairly new. So it's helpful for the council people to be here and offer their thoughts on those changes and basically offer your support in favor of those changes, save Amendment 5. You mentioned, Greg, at the outset of your presentation, the various community organizations that were involved. And I know that Council Lady Gamble mentioned that Representative Dixie had weighed in in support of that. And I know we just recently got some correspondence from Senator Gilmore and I know you responded back to her. So it seems like that might be a good thing to talk about as we're in the process of approving this or considering this.
Sure, absolutely. So I did receive, and the commissioners received a letter from Senator Gilmore expressing concern that we ensure that equity is the foremost in our minds and that we don't do anything to diminish the ability of African-Americans and also other minorities within the community to elect representatives of their choice. And raised a number of questions around the Voting Rights Act. Her letter, I thought, was really, you know, raised a lot of questions that we take very, very seriously. And so I did reach out to her this morning through a number of different ways to try to seek clarity on whether there is a specific concern because I would be very, very anxious to address that. And so if there's a specific issue, I would like the opportunity to, we're all human, so there's a chance we miss something and we're open to getting feedback to improving our work. As Greg has shown, we've gotten a lot of feedback around the demographic issues in the county, including from a lot of predominantly African-American neighborhoods. And we've made changes to address those. So it's been our goal to respond. I have not received a response from her as yet as to whether there's a specific issue or if it was a more general. I did provide all the correspondence and information that I have to the commission. So you know what I know. And so I think I did ask Greg to walk you through how we have traditionally interpreted the voting ra, voting, voting, Voting Rights Act requirements, sorry, too many Rs there, in our work. And as always, I would just say, this is foremost. So if there's something we missed, if there's something else, some other standard or measure we should be using, we, we want to hear that. And we've expressed that during our community meetings. And Greg, can you list the organizations that we met with that were outside of the community groups just to test, test ourselves, right? And make sure we were meeting the best threshold?
Sure. So we, we talked with the NAACP, the National Chapter, the Urban League of Middle Tennessee, the Equity Alliance reached out partway through the process, and the Tennessee Immigrant and Refugee Rights Coalition, as well as neighbor to neighbor.
If it's of interest, I believe there, perhaps one of the council members could also speak to that question, if you would be interested in, in hearing.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this. I have been in regular communication with Senator Gilmore about the redistricting. She actually lives in District 3 and had made her aware of the Plan A and the opposition in the community for Plan A. And, and after Plan B and even Plan C, I actually talked, communicated with her through email yesterday and expressed the support for Plan C that I have received from the community. I think I copied you all on 70, with 70 community members that all support Plan C and feel that the gerrymandering or the removal of historically African-American communities from the district had been addressed. The planning staff listened to the community, made adjustments and addressed those concerns. I, I expressed that to Senator Gilmore. And as far as I knew, we were good. I did not, I wasn't aware of a letter that was sent until this morning about her concerns. I did reach out to her today and talk with her to ask, to get specifics about her concerns because I, I knew our area had been addressed, but I didn't know if there were other concerns in other districts throughout the county because the letter didn't specifically say any particular district. It was just countywide. And so I asked her, was there any specific area or issue that was going on that I wasn't aware of? And, and I did not get any specific information on that. She mentioned something about, she was talking about the school board, not necessarily the council. But again, I didn't get any specific information. So I don't know what those concerns are. I think you all have heard from several African-American council members who are here today, including myself. And we haven't shared any concerns. You heard the letter from Representative Dixie, who I also, who also lives near, he lives in District 1, who also shared support for the changes in the plan in District C. So unfortunately, I can't speak to what Senator Gilmore was specifically speaking about. Thank you.
Well, that was really helpful. It's nice to know that even if you had not been able to get in contact with her, that Council Lady Gamble has had those conversations about the specifics, particularly as it relates to the amendments and, and Proposal C as it. to the amendments and, and Proposal C as it was compared to Proposal A and B. So I think that you've done a great job, and I can say it for the thousandth time, I appreciate all the work that you and your team have done. This is a very laborious process, just for me, and I'm just reviewing it, so I can't imagine someone who's actually been set to actually do the work. So I appreciate everything you've done, and I am interested to hear other commissioners' thoughts.
Thank you. Commissioner Tubbs?
I mostly just can offer accolades as well. I do appreciate Councilman Withers for, you know, in depth and also reaching out to other council persons that are not here. So I, and that, that was actually helpful for me. And like everyone has said, the ones, you know, the council people that are here, I appreciated that. And the only thing I was going to bring up, Commissioner Blackshear brought up, was what Senator Gilmore, and I, I think that's the best we can, we have, you know, you guys have tried to address that. And I'm sure Councilman Gamble, if she reaches out to you, you'll probably, you know, express any concerns, or maybe hopefully they'll be all addressed. So, you know, like you said, tweaking one little thing makes such a big deal, you know, because like, as an architect, I wanted to clean out some of the lines, you know, but I, you know, I do realize that, that's, that's not how this works. So job well done, and I'm, I'm supportive of what you guys have done.
Commissioner Lawson?
I, I've been in a position that Mr. Claxton's been in 10 years ago, sitting on this very body when we had to do redistricting, and it was a chore where you could have 10 people in one area that could throw things off. And you, you've done an, an exceptional job with that. May your pay envelope respect that. You heard that, didn't you? I, I find all of the staff's recommendations quite acceptable. I think that we, we as a group, you know, this is an advice to our council. That's what we're doing. These are recommendations, they're not approvals, but recommendations at this point. And I think that what has been laid out is very good. I've heard some question about Amendment 5, and some people want to do one thing, one thing. I live in White's Creek. My phone rings all the time, and they say, Mr. Commissioner, can we talk to you? It's 2:00 in the morning. But I've, I've, I've heard the pros and cons, but the pros are very much stronger. And it's because of that councilwoman. It's because of her leadership and people not wanting to lose it. So that's about the only thing I can bring to the table. Excellent job.
Thank you. Commissioner Haynes?
In my 11 years on this body, there are times serving publicly that you're really proud of the staff. Nashville Next is one, and this is the second. Greg, you have done a yeoman's effort. Y'all have put in countless hours. You have been selfless with your team. I think the amendments make sense. Thanks very much to the council people for coming to speak. Your input on this very important matter is far more important than our opinions. So I'm in support of Plan C and Amendments 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Thank you. Commissioner Sims?
I want to thank you too, but most of all, I want to protect you if something comes along. The kind of things that, first of all, I want to say that I had many good years of hooding people at Vanderbilt, and you are at the top of one of those. So I wish I could hood you for what the work you just did. You know, most court cases come out of the standard deviations. Are we over 10%? Did any of these amendments get us anywhere closer to 10% or?
Several of the districts are very close to the thresholds, which, which is why we, you know, with the, the very large one with Amendment 3, you know, we had kind of a small change in one or two places that people were seeking, and we had to sort of find ways to, to work it through. All of these amendments individually or taken together result in, in compliant districts.
Okay. So we don't have any because of these amendments that put us over the 10%? The other thing that most gets us in trouble is how we did the outreach for this, and I think we did, but I just want to go on record that we really did do weekend things?
So we had primarily evening meetings when it was publicly for community meetings. We had virtual events. We had drop-in hours at, at our office. We had very extensive online outreach, as well as fielding phone calls, email outreach. And we, knowing that it was going to move very fast, we began our outreach well before we, we had the data or we had draft plans, knowing that it was, it was going to be, you know, take a little bit of time for the word to get around. We wanted to kind of build our email list, so we had, you know, kind of the 500 people most passionate about redistricting, knew what we were doing the moment we, we released the first drafts.
And we met the Disability Act for some. And back to the standard deviation, which district concerns you the most in case we just need to keep an eye out? Are there any that got, you said they got close. How close are we actually?
I mean, we're within a handful of people for some districts, and it's, it, it varies in a couple places. Partly it comes down to kind of how quickly the census blocks around them move. So I know, you know, we, we've gotten some feedback about concerns around 11, 12, and 14, but as we've worked through with, with those folks, they see that moving one puts every, like, one little block, you know, puts everything out of balance. So, you know, there's a couple of districts that are very, very close, but it's really kind of the district's population compared to the blocks that are around it.
And that trying to stay contiguous is a master feat. So I really do thank you. And, and you know, I want you to draw from us, any of our expertise, and you and I both love, they went to the pictures, I went to the Excel spreadsheet, so I really appreciate the incredible work you put in those Excel spreadsheets. So thank you.
Commissioner Henley?
Thank you, Vice Chair. To protect our sensitive technology, I'm going to request that Commissioner Lawson cuts off his microphone. I'm just still poking with Commissioner Lawson earlier. I will say this, first and foremost, again, just as all my fellow commissioners have done, I, I would like to express thanks and then also just adoration for the amount of effort that's been put in on a task that, quite honestly, I didn't understand until I first got a pretty good breakdown and a thorough overview of what all it entails. And again, just a great amount of respect, and, and I think it was best said by Commissioner Hayes, just, just pride in understanding the, what you had to do in a period of time and, and still understanding that, you know, we are a city and a community, in several communities that are still dealing with the pandemic and a lot of other things, and a city that seems to be moving very fast for a lot of people, making sure that, that they had the opportunity to be heard is greatly appreciated. And I do also want to say, you know, I, I mentioned this at our last meeting about Proposal C coming quickly. I want to extend a great deal of thanks and appreciation for the council members who have come here today. You know, these, Proposal C itself was relatively short, but there were not an extensive amount of changes, and I think a great job was done presenting why those were made. Again, thank you for that, Greg, and explaining that. But hearing directly from the council members who live in these districts, who talk to all the people, you know, as Commissioner Lawson said, who get those phone calls and can have those conversations that we, we can't always be representative of as, as commissioners, so I do appreciate that as well. I think, you know, seeing these amendments for the first time, really, I, I don't have any significant reservations. I think that is, again, made fairly easy by the, by the council people coming and speaking on behalf of those that they support. I, I do think that a lot of logic was placed in there, and seeing how sensitive it is just to make one or two small adjustments, it, it does, it does give a great reverence to, to what's in front of us now and how it, how it should be treated. But I, I will also say, I think, you know, the balance that was taken to give community members not only their desire to keep their representation, to keep their communities intact, that see the hard work that they've done in the future around certain commercial corridors, community centers that have a lot of, a lot of, spent a lot of intention to create them, and then now as they become more prosperous and they start to transform, a lot of pride and ownership of those spaces, and so I definitely recognize that as well. I don't have anything that would be contrary to any of the recommendations that the staff made, and having the luxury of going last, you get to, all the great questions have already been asked, and I've been able, I've been a fishery of being able to hear that. So I don't, I don't want to drag things on. I think I've had a, a great opportunity to listen from the questions of my other council members, or excuse me, my other commissioners, and all the words from the council members.
Thank you all. I guess I had a, I wanted to see if we could revisit 5 a little bit more, and partly this is just for, for making sure I understand exactly the shift that's happened with 5. So currently, is that triangle currently in District, what tri, who currently has that triangle? District?
District 3.
District 3.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm a little with Commissioner Johnson in that, you know, the comments that we got, that I saw are very overwhelmingly in support of keeping that with the rest of White's Creek. And I would say that the, the comment letters did come from, you know, the people that show up every single time there's a White's Creek item. It's the same people that, so I, I take that seriously. They're, they definitely are the voice of White's Creek, and I, and I want to make sure that we think about that one carefully. So it's, so I guess can, we've seen a lot of rezoning, recent rezonings in this area. Is, is this the triangle where we have seen, like, we just did the big downzoning? Or is that outside of this triangle?
I will confirm, I can look and confirm, but I, I don't know of any recent decisions that you all have made related to zone changes in this immediate area. There's a proposal that was actually deferred tonight that's within this area, but any recent decisions, let me just confirm, but I'm not just-
There's a couple of big things that we've seen in the last few months are outside of this triangle.
That's right, yeah. But I, I'm going to confirm.
Okay.
I can do some digging right quick.
It doesn't matter, I'm just trying to give myself the context of what this, this triangle represents. So I, you know, I just, it, it does give me pause. I feel, I feel very good about the rest of Proposal C and Amendments 1 through 4, but I just wanted to, to make sure that we had a chance to, to look a little bit more at 5. I don't know if anybody else, I, I don't know, Commissioner Johnson, if you had any other thoughts on that area? You know, I guess, I guess maybe understanding too staff's recommendation to not support that amendment?
Sure. Sorry. So this was one that we know has been extremely contested from the, the very start of our, our initial drafts that, that we released. We had extensive conversations about kind of the, the neighborhoods just west of here, keeping those within District 3. And, you know, kind of as we went through those conversations, there was this sense of kind of, you know, a lot of folks wanting, as, as Councilmember Gamble referenced, like, recognizing that a lot of her district had traditionally been in White's Creek. We got a lot of feedback from the White's Creek community about the appreciation of kind of bringing so much of it together into District 1, this one area. I know it didn't surface as much in the emailed comments afterwards. It was more kind of wrapped up in people's overall appreciation for kind of the revised District 3. But our impression was that it was very much, you know, a, a place that, that two, two, two communities came together and both saw it as, as part of theirs. And it's just, it's very tough to sort of, you know, draw a clean line when you've got an over sense of stewardship and ownership for an area, and different, different, you know, sort of harsh portions of it that folks are responding to. So given sort of the, the, the level of the difficulty of the discussions around the boundary for District 3, given sort of the, you know, the context that we're working under, you know, within the Voting Rights Act, and understanding that that was a large part of the, the conversation, we lean towards sort of, you know, seeing that it is a gateway point. It's got commercial services, it's got a transition to the high school and to the rural community, but we lean towards keeping it with the, the district that is, you know, has a little bit more of a suburban character this far north.
Also, we did reach out to both council members. You've heard from Councilwoman Gamble, and so we did do council outreach here, and we, we felt that this generally reflected the sense of the elected, the elected members. Is that correct? Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
So that, that's the reason we recommended disapproval.
Yeah, I mean, I think when, when you, the handout you gave, it, it does give you a good feel of how concentrated around that I-24 interchange the, you know, that's definitely a different character. But it's also a tough triangle to, to manage.
And Commissioner, just to be clear, that was a handout from community members.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So in terms of process, we are going to go through each amendment separately, and then we're going to vote on the Proposal C with the amendments. Is that correct?
I would recommend moving the school board boundaries first-
Okay.
-and then taking each amendment separately. After we've taken the amendment separately, then vote on C as amended, depending on the sense of the commission.
Okay.
So start with school board.
So is there any other discussion before we switch to that? What was that?
We'll get to it when we get there.
Okay. So before we start on motions, any other discussion? Everybody feel prepared? All right. Then with that, I will solicit a motion to approve the proposal for the, Proposal C for the school board.
Move. Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. So the next step is going to be to, yeah, to start working through our potential amendments to Proposal C for the council districts. So the first is Amendment 1, which is keeping the airport in District 13.
Move approval. Second.
Any other discussion? Motion carries. Okay.
All in favor? Aye.
All right. The next item is Amendment 2, which is the shifts to multiple districts, mostly District 5. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The third one is Amendment 3, which is the multiple shifts to quite a few districts. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next is Item Amendment 4. Do I have a motion to approve? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And the last one is Amendment 5. And do I have a motion?
So here I would say, because staff recommended 1 through 4, I would say, do you agree with staff's recommendation to disapprove?
Right. Staff's recommendation to disapprove Amendment 5. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So with that one, Councilwoman, I would recommend that you ask if there are any other amendments that you would like the commissioners to entertain, just so everyone knows there's an opportunity.
Okay. Are there any other amendments that anyone would like to entertain before we vote on the, on the full proposal? Okay. So hearing none. Are we okay?
He's happy.
Okay. Hearing, hearing no further amendments, I need a motion to, to approve Proposal C as amended with Amendments 1 through 4.
So moved.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yay, Greg.
Yay, Greg. So I know we have another, another three real, three of our other items to hear. Should we take a, a short break and reconvene? Yes, reconvene in about 10 minutes? Are we still- Take their seats. Are we still, do we still have technology challenges? Hold on, maybe I spoke too soon. Oh yeah, see, we have no screens.
We're hearing Item Eighteen?
Yes, we are going to start up again with Item Eighteen, when we can. Yay. Is that it? Are we good? Okay. All right, so we are going to go ahead and start with Item Eighteen. Oh, you're cute. Okay. I think you can stay and not vote, or I guess go, stay in the, go to the break room?
Well, we have a quorum, so you can stay or you can take a, yeah, it's up to you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Item number eighteen tonight, I'm Amelia Lewis, and I will be presenting this for staff, is the Stevens Valley SP. So the request is to amend a specific plan to permit a mixed-use development. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. I would like to note that you should have received a memo from staff revising one of the conditions of approval, and so that should have been given to you at the start of the meeting, and I can go through that at the end if you have any questions. The 23-acre site is located at the intersection of Union Bridge Road and Pasco Road. The 23-acre site is currently zoned specific plan or SP. The request today is to amend the existing SP on the site. So some history into the SP. The SP was approved in 2015, and it had three non-contiguous areas along the county line, which you can see on the screen. So the proposed amendment that we would be, that we're looking at today is just for Area One, and Area Two and Three would remain the same. The proposed SP would increase the permitted residential uses as well as the non-residential square footages. So the preliminary SP is shown on the screen on the left, and the proposed amended on the right. And so the entitlements are listed below. It was originally approved with 243 residential units and a maximum non-residential square footage of 88,000. The proposed amendment would modify that to be a maximum of 343 residential units with a maximum non-residential square footage of just over 100,000 square feet. So as you can see on the site plans, a lot is similar in terms of the main road connections through the site. There's a roundabout at the northern portion of the site, and then the primary roads that lead around the site and through the site are keeping that kind of framework. Both plans envisioned the non-residential uses to be along that primary spine, which is shown on the proposed plan in red, and as we extend to the outer limits of the site, it's primarily residential in uses. Okay, and here's a closer look at the proposed site plan, which would be slightly modified with the amendment. So the site plan consists of a mix of unit types and uses. So as I said before, the red are multifamily and non, or are mixed use and non-residential buildings, whereas the yellow and the smaller units are different residential types. New public streets would connect off of the roundabout leading through the site and leading down into Williamson County, which you can see at the dash line that's at the bottom of the screen. So the policy on the site is primarily suburban neighborhood center. The grounding principles in this policy are to establish a mix of uses and provide non-residential services to the surrounding area. The proposed plan maintains the mixed-use intent of the policy as well as the previously approved SP. A wide range of non-residential uses are included in the list of permitted uses for the area. Additionally, the proposed site plans include a wider range of housing types than was envisioned with the first plan and includes, sorry, includes a wider range of housing types than originally approved, as well as the introduction of additional open space and the reduction of large surface parking with more pedestrian walkways and some garage parking as well. Staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
Thank you. I will go ahead and open up the public hearing as the applicant here. Hello, Commissioner, former Commissioner.
Thank you, Vice Chair Farr. Councilmember Withers, thank you. Commissioners really appreciate the time tonight, and as always, appreciate your commitment to the quality of Nashville, to our neighborhoods, to the quality of life, and to the quality of our built environment. I miss it a little bit, not being on the other side of the table. I also want to thank Councilman Rosenberg, who was here earlier and spoke. We really appreciate his attention to this, listening, trying to understand what we were trying to achieve with this amendment, while also listening for his constituents' concerns. Also want to thank the staff for working with us over the last several months. We really appreciate it. We deferred a couple of times to work through some things with them, and we're in full support of the staff's recommendation, including all 27 conditions, as well as the amended condition that you have on your desk. My name's Hunter G. I'm principal with Smith G. Studio. We are the town architects at Stevens Valley. That means that we wrote the design guidelines for which every project that's built at Stevens Valley is reviewed. We do all the plan review. We assist the developer with strategy as the project continues to move forward. I'll get into this a little bit, but what's a little bit hard to tell for those that may not be familiar with Stevens Valley, is Stevens Valley is a 900-acre planned community. Only about 23 and a half acres are in Davidson County, so this is the, this is the neighborhood center associated with a much larger development. The rest of it's on the other side of the county line. I also want to point out that within the, as Amelia mentioned, the project, our request is consistent with policy, but it's actually well within the limits, even with our increased, the request for increased entitlements, is well within the limits of the T3 neighborhood, Neighborhood Center policy. So, we're not pushing the cap that that policy might allow. If you could go ahead and move to the next slide, Amelia. As the council member mentioned, we have, we had a meeting back in July, which was sparsely attended, but we put out notices based on your guidelines, and there was no major opposition there. We've heard very little from anyone in the community that's opposed to our request. But I wanted to point out, and these are not images of our, of our community meeting, these are images of Stevens Valley today. When we were here, when, when we were here back in 2015, nothing, you know, was built out there. Since then, 150 new homes have been built, amenities, open spaces, and there's now a real sense of community at Stevens Valley. And this, their Neighborhood Center has been anticipated, planned, entitled since 2015. Our clients, the owners and developers are now leaning into, they feel like it's time to start thinking about beginning to develop this part of the plan. And so they came back to us and asked us to really, you know, think about the plan that was approved, how can we make it better? How can we, you know, create really the legacy that the developers are looking to create out here? So, if we could go on to the next slide. I did want to mention that some of you may remember when this came before the Planning Commission in 2015, Chairman McLean was the, was, or Jim McLean was the chairman. He sent a message to us, asked us to share with you all, that he pointed out that Stevens Valley really will set a new standard for mixed-use development. If you haven't been out there, you'll see the quality of what's being built out there in the public spaces and the trails, in the architecture, landscaping, et cetera, has been compared to West Haven and other, other similar type, new urbanist, mixed-use communities around the country. So we appreciate Jim's support. Just a couple of images of some of the homes that have been built out there. Because the 150-plus homes that have been built are on the Williamson County side, there's only one product that's being offered, it's single-family homes, because it's Williamson County. The Neighborhood Center is a real opportunity, and you'll see as I walk you through the plan, how we think we've broadened and expanded the options in terms of the housing choices in this area of Bellevue. Next slide. Thank you. Next slide. So this gives a little bit of the context. You can see the diagonal across there is the Williamson-Davidson County line with the proposed Neighborhood Center area there at the corner of Union Bridge and Pasco. All the area to the south, existing Phase One is, that's where the 150-plus homes have been built, so it's immediately adjacent to the Neighborhood Center, and then there's future phases beyond. You can also see existing neighborhoods to the north, to the east, as well as several other developments that have started to occur and are entitled along the west side of Pasco Road. One of the questions that came up was whether our infrastructure can handle the additional, additional units, additional traffic here. So we had our traffic engineer do a traffic assessment. As part of the original entitlements, there were a lot of requirements to do some infrastructure, do infrastructure improvements, both utilities and, as well as traffic improvements. Almost all of those have been completed, and there's a couple more that will be triggered down the road as the town center is developed, including some in Williamson County. If you have more questions, our traffic engineer, or if you have any questions, our traffic engineer is here. Next slide, please. So this looks real similar to what Amelia showed, but I wanted to point out a couple of things. Again, our clients asked us to really take a fresh look at this plan, and some things that we observed were that there were very large blocks with large parking lots in the middle of them, which means there's very little connectivity, very little walkability, or maybe more challenging walkability. We also felt like it was a little bit of a generic plan, that at 30,000 feet when this was planned, it made sense, it's just a simple, simple symmetrical plan, but it didn't seem to have the richness that a lot of these communities have. If anybody's been to Rosemary Beach, you know that there's little tweaks and bends and turns and passageways and all these places of discovery, and that's the, that's the little level of quality, place, experience, discovery that we want to create here. So, that's a big part of what we've done with the new plan. Additionally, we've created some more deliberate open spaces, in fact, more open space. One of the conditions is related to more pervious surface, actually holding us to a higher standard in terms of pervious surface despite the increased entitlements. So, I'm going to try to reserve two minutes, so there's a lot I want to hit on, but essentially, you know, we're trying to create a better plan here, and this amendment will allow us to do that. It'll allow us to block some of the parking lots and back-of-house areas that the previous plan exposed, and really offer a lot more variety in terms of housing typologies and choice in housing. Next slide. It's a little bit bigger. You can see some of the passageways. No longer do we have the really large parking lots, additional street connections, sidewalks, more open space, more usable deliberate open space. Next slide. And you can keep going. So this is an image. The one thing we're not doing here is we're not changing the character of what was originally approved. We're not asking for any more height, and so the character is going to be exactly like what was originally envisioned. We think it's going to be a lot better, richer, with more options. Thank you. I'll reserve the last minute, 10 seconds.
Thank you very much. So is there anyone here speaking in support of this project? Anyone speaking in opposition? You'll come forth, you'll have two minutes. And just ask that you start with your name and address.
Good evening, thank you for your time. My name is Douglas Janer. I live at 8495 Poplar Creek Road. I am the individual that has submitted the change.org petition with 375 signatures. I realize some of those signatures are from people who don't quite live in the area, but at least 350 of them do. Two parts of that petition, and by the way, since I come here with the backing of 350, I wonder if I could have an extra minute or two if needed.
I guess I'll turn to our counsel to-
Your rules state that unless someone represents an organization-
All right. Well, the first part of the petition calls for a 12-month moratorium on multifamily or apartments in the west Bellevue area. It does appear that this is going to have a multifamily component to it. This petition is a result of the continued shredding of the Nashville Next Community Plan by recent zoning changes. The voices of the community individuals that put their input into the Nashville Next Plan for this area has been increasingly discarded. We especially witnessed this with the South Harpist Farms Development. You might recall this was a development off Highway 100, 300 homes that you all outright disapproved, whereby Council Rosenberg took it straight to the council and got it approved by his colleagues. That action by Councilman Rosenberg was a direct assault on the Nashville Next Plan for this area, and it's because of that that this petition started. We have several multifamily projects going on in the area right now. The second part of the petition is a result of my discovery of thousands, several thousand dollars of campaign contributions flowing between Councilman Rosenberg and area developers. So far, I've been able to identify about $5,000 in campaign contributions between Councilman Rosenberg and developers and agents involved in the Stevens Valley project. I think the public has a right to know about the political, financial influence behind these zoning changes. I submit that these contributions are legal, the people that made these contributions have done anything, nothing wrong, but it does pose a financial conflict of interest on behalf of Councilman Rosenberg. And when he gets up here and says he supports this project, he should be saying, oh, by the way, I did get about $5,000 in campaign contributions from all the folks involved in this development. And lastly, I would just like to submit this if I could-
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else speaking in opposition to this project? If not, if the applicant would like to use the remaining time?
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate again, this new plan, if you compare it with the old, offers a lot more townhome product. That's what all the little hash yellow is, which lends itself to be, tend to be homeownership. As far as I understand, we can't regulate rental versus for sale, but we think this plan will actually facilitate more for-sale product in the townhomes throughout, and really more options in terms of housing for this area. If you have any questions, we're happy to address them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, I will declare the public hearing closed. Councilmember's not here anymore, right? I'll look at them. Okay. I will go ahead and start with Commissioner Lawson.
Well, first, you let me say, I'm a termite. It's unfortunate that some of the things that were presented this evening really are of no consequence to what our decisioning is. And it's unfortunate that that air of distrust is out there, but that's something we can't deal with. We've got to look at the regulations and what we have in front of us, I think certainly does do that. I think it's- I think it's a good one. I think another thing it's doing is providing additional housing for the 100 people a day that are coming into this county. And I think that's something that we really need to look at all the time, and we do. That's all I have to say. I like it.
Commissioner Tibbs.
I, yeah, I've been through this, I guess the Williamson County part of it. It's a very well-laid-out plan. I think, I think it's okay for me to say, I think it's better than the other one. But anyway, you guys, it's well-planned out and I think it's more of a neighborhood and I actually, I applaud the designer and the developer for this. I think this, the revised, it is better. You know, and of course, you've taken a little bit more detail to it. You know, I do want to, I do want to ask, but you don't have to answer why the one mixed-use building is turned to make you have to diagonal, but there's some interest in that too, you know, kind of not to be so, you know, symmetrical, whatever. But generally speaking, I like the way the breakdown, I like the, how you've mixed up the uses. It's well-thought-through and, you know, and the impact is really on the Williamson County side. This is a great center and I think it's going to be very, you know, really will support what's going on over there. So I'm in, in a support of it.
Commissioner Blackshear.
This is hopefully just a quick and easy question for staff. The opponent mentioned that he's concerned with the disregarding of the plan when it comes to development in this area. And then obviously, we have in the staff's analysis that this complies with policy. If you could just touch on that a little bit more, that would be helpful.
Yeah, so the policy is suburban neighborhood center. Which is intended to provide a variety of housing options at a suburban level of density. So less than we would see in kind of our urban transects, but still providing that variety of housing options, which I think is accomplished with this plan in terms of the options that they've provided and increasing that from the previously approved plan. There's also calls in the policy for open space, creating those community spaces, which are met with the plan, as well as improving access and connectivity around and through the site. So with this plan and actually the, there have been two plans approved that work on the infrastructure on the Union Bridge Road, the Roundabout and Pasco Road by providing additional sidewalks. So sidewalks will be provided around the perimeter of the site as well as through the site leading into the county. So in terms of connection to the policy, we believe that it is consistent with the policy for those reasons.
Thank you. That was helpful. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. I appreciate former Commissioner and great explanation. Compared to original SP and modification, I have no doubt this modification is completely better and with open space and interesting walkway with sidewalk. And it would be a great amenity to existing the other county lines residents. It's too bad that county does not offer this variety of housing choice. I think this is, that's what the community needs with walkability, with, you know, access to retail, coffee shop, and whatever to community can get together, that will create more community. So for that, I think it's a great improvement with existing, you know, original plan and I am in support of the staff recommendation and appreciate additional condition.
Thank you. Councilmember Withers.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Appreciate the applicant bringing this forward. You know, the applicant and I both live in a very urban neighborhood that has sidewalks most everywhere, at least on one side of the street. And what we hear, you know, one of the biggest advocates for sidewalks in the city is Councilmember Henderson, who represents a suburban area. And what we hear from citizens throughout the county is that they want opportunities for walkability. In some cases, it could be on their neighborhood or it could be a neighborhood center where they can just go and do some shopping or something and enjoy getting out and walking around. And so that's one of the things I really appreciate about this plan, the attention to detail. Obviously, the original plan would have had sidewalks too, but in reviewing a lot of the staff conditions, I think it addresses very well that walkability, creating an environment that people would want to walk around, creating some visual interest. I see a lot of detail about screening and just things like that to make sure that it's a pleasant environment and not, you know, maybe like a suburban strip mall or something like that. I mean, it will really feel like a real neighborhood that also has some other amenities. And that's something that we need in our commercial areas in the suburban parts of the county too. So I think that's great. We definitely cannot regulate rental. We need a lot of rental in the county, just as much as we need for-sale product. It sounds like this will likely be for-sale product. What I do hear from sometimes from my colleagues who represent suburban areas is that they wish that townhomes would, there would be a different word for townhomes than multifamily because a lot of people think of that as being apartments. And not that there's anything wrong with that, but you know, townhomes are a single-family home product and so it's not quite the same as apartments. We definitely do hear sometimes from the Bellevue area that they feel like they're inundated with lots and lots and lots of apartment buildings. And so I know Councilmember Rosenberg advocates very strongly for Bellevue and bringing a product like this that has single-family attached, but a townhouse product, I think is a good compromise. But overall, I think this is a great improvement over the prior plan and I support it with the staff recommendations.
Thank you. Commissioner Henley.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I won't echo a lot of the things that were just said by the council member, but I do agree with just about all of them. I did notice the level of detail in the conditions and I think that shows a lot of the collaboration and that detailed effort that was presented by Hunter when he was up here and working with the staff. And then comparatively to the previous plan, of course, I'm going to commend the addition of more units in an area that can support that and support it very easily. Again, we need a lot of housing and the variety of housing types is something that's great to see. Also think the plan itself is, again, more interesting. I mean, the first plan, not that it was bad, but it was very much kind of folded, right? And just kind of had two segments. And as I look at what's on the screen here, I see, you know, what could be almost seen as, you know, maybe four or five or even six different kind of neighborhood nodes and they create a lot of variety. And I think people will take pride in being able to traverse not only their neighborhoods, but to the, that central spine where there is those type of services and amenities that people continue to clamor for in just about every part of our city. So I don't have much to say other than I'm glad to see it. I'm glad it is coming forward. It sounds like a community that's had a plan approved since 2015 will hopefully start to get something built that they've longed for. So I'm excited that it's brought to us today.
Thank you. Commissioner Haynes. Commissioner Santos is accused.
I want to commend the applicant and the developer. They didn't have to amend this plan. Today, it's a better plan. Y'all need to keep tweaking it as the project continues. These large-scale suburban rural mixed-use projects do work, especially during the pandemic. We saw that. So I think the walkability, the connectivity, this is a much better plan. So with that, I will move approval of staff's recommendations with all of the conditions, including the new condition we have before us.
That is a proper motion. Do I have a second? Any other discussion? All in favor? And one recusal? Motion carries. Okay. Thank you. Our next item is item 34, I believe. 34? We'll give everyone a second to clear, to clear out and then... We're ready whenever you are.
Okay, great. Hello, Commissioners. I'm Nora Yu with the Planning Department and I will be presenting item 34, a request for an overall height modification for the Rutledge Hill Mixed Use Project located at 502nd Avenue South. The request is for an overall height modification to allow two residential buildings of 32 stories and 39 stories and one hotel building of 29 stories on this site. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions or defer without all conditions. The policy for this site is T6 Downtown Neighborhood. The downtown neighborhood policy noted in the pink hatch in this map preserves and creates diverse downtown neighborhoods that are compatible with the general character of surrounding historic developments and the envisioned character of new downtown development. It is meant to foster appropriate transitions from less intense areas of downtown neighborhoods to the more intense downtown core policy areas. T6 downtown neighborhood areas contain high-density residential and mixed-use development. And this project's site outlined here is located directly adjacent to the T6 Downtown Core Policy, which is noted in red, and the Sobro Subdistrict. The Sobro Subdistrict does allow for 30 stories of building height by right and unlimited height through the bonus height program. Since council approval in 2015, project height modification requests in the downtown area have been overseen by the Planning Commission. Also since 2015, council has amended the downtown code 11 times for various reasons and has supported this authority given to the commission to consider overall height modifications. To date, there have been 17 OHMs or overall height modifications approved by the Planning Commission. The process requires that the Executive Director of the Planning Department first makes a determination as to whether reasonable efforts have been made to utilize all available bonus height programs before the modification request is considered by the commission. The determination letter for this project was issued on October 6, 2021, and the applicant held three publicly noticed community meetings on August 19th, October 27th, and December 2nd. After presenting an informational overview to the MDHA Design Review Committee on November 2nd, 2021, the applicant returned on November 16th for a recommendation on the height modification. The MDHA DRC voted in favor with none opposed to recommend conceptual approval and to support the overall height modification as requested. As part of the process for the overall height modification, the downtown code states the planning commission shall review and may grant additional height for exceptional design, including but not limited to unique architecture, an exceptionally strong streetscape, contribution to the skyline, improvement of the project's relationship to surrounding properties, and improvement to the character of the neighborhood. As seen here, in some instances, there are other improvements that can also be considered. Over the last several months, staff has reviewed this project in light of this criteria and we've engaged the development team with comments, concerns, and questions. The top diagram here shows the gross building area as allowable per current downtown code standards in the Rutledge Hill Subdistrict, where a project can build six stories by right or up to seven stories with the bonus height program. The bottom diagram illustrates the concept proposed by the applicant, which is to create a large urban neighborhood park framed by buildings at the edges of the site. For comparison, the as of right diagram shows a total of approximately 1.1 million square feet and this project proposes to build 1.3 million square feet. This is the proposed site plan, which shows the three buildings framing the 1.36 acre central green park space. The buildings anchor three of the corners while the park space transitions into the historic district at the corner of Rutledge Street and Leah Avenue. The emphasis on residential use with no short-term rentals helps support the historic and emerging residential character of this neighborhood. The project looks to inhabit and highlight this block's location as a transition between the immediately adjacent Sobro, Lafayette, and Rutledge Hill subdistributes of the downtown code. All parking is below grade, which allows the park and the buildings to engage with the street directly and creates an inviting walkable streetscape. The project's publicly accessible open space totals approximately 83,670 square feet with about 59,390 of that open to the sky. 57% of the buildable site area is comprised of a large open public park as seen here. This open space includes passive and active elements, seating and interactive water features, and will be a key community amenity for this downtown neighborhood, ensuring a truly usable and maintained green area in this location for public use. The building footprints are minimized to create a more dynamic and gracious park. This facilitates relationships to surrounding properties and allows those properties to enjoy views of and access to the park. And this approach to the site planning rather than a monolithic super-block building is a significant improvement for this neighborhood. The park also helps transition across the significant topography on this site and there's a grade change of about 37 feet from the corner of Second and Peabody all the way to the corner of Rutledge and Leah. Each building anchors a corner of the site and the park space helps facilitate, consider transitions between the streets and the interior of the site with that grade change. So next, I'll just walk around, do a quick virtual tour of the site, beginning at the southeast corner and move clockwise through the open spaces and buildings. These are images of the Rutledge Square Water Plaza area at the corner of Leah Avenue and Rutledge Street. This park serves as a critical transition into the historic scale and character of Rutledge Street and the park is thoughtfully placed with relationship to buildings across both Leah Avenue and Rutledge Street. The residential building at the corner of Second Avenue and Leah Avenue is shown here. The taller volumes are set back along Leah Avenue, allowing the lower-scaled base to transition to the historic building fabric to the south. And the highest portion of the building is slender with a footprint of about 7,200 square feet above the 27th floor. The base of the building at three stories tall is calibrated to the height of the historic and residential structures across the street. The Second Avenue entry to the proposed open park space will have a strong visual connection to the public street and to the proposed urban park to the west across Second Avenue, creating a foundation of substantial public green spaces in this part of downtown. The new park helps create visual respite and provides an important character differentiation between the Rutledge Hill neighborhood and Sobro, a more urban hardscape neighborhood to the north. The proposed hotel sits at the northwest corner of the site and serves a transition from the tourist-oriented Sobro Subdistrict to the residential character of Rutledge Hill. The scale of the window patterns and the balcony articulation integrate a residential scale to help support this important transition. The three proposed buildings each differentiate their building base with lower heights and distinct window proportions, orienting the architecture toward the scale of the pedestrian realm. These proportional adjustments help transition the scale of the overall massing to help create a more welcoming streetscape. And this is the proposed entry to the park along Peabody Street directly east of the hotel. As people move through this neighborhood, they'll have the choice to traverse the city streets or this new shaded and active park. The second residential building consists of, or contains a stepped massing that is tallest near the unlimited height subdistrict to the north with smaller-scale massing near existing residences and the proposed park space to the south. The rhythm of vertical and horizontal planes creates an attractive facade treatment that texturizes this massing and indicates residential use. And situating this building further back from Leah Avenue allows for that generous open space transition into the Park's Water Plaza, which is at the corner of Rutledge Street where we started. In addition to the rendered views, these images show the proposed materiality of the east and south elevations of the Rutledge Residential Building and the Second Avenue Residential Building. Note the stepping of the building scale, architectural articulation of the different volumes, and the movement of the ground plane along the base of the sloping streets. This slide shows the west and north elevations of the project. On the north elevation, the slender side of the Rutledge Residential Building is evident and you'll see the significant spacing between the two buildings allows for the generous park space in between and the Second Avenue building in the background. The designs of each of... The designs of each of the three buildings uses a three-story dimensional unit as a way to organize the facade, and this helps mitigate the scale of the buildings while also indicating their residential use. This is an important and distinct expression that creates architecture unique to this site and program. This is an aerial view from the southeast, looking at the project. The ghosted buildings you see here in the rendering are structures that are proposed under construction or soon to be under construction. From this view, you can see the relationship of the proposed project to the riverfront, and the park space is an opportunity, as seen here, to pull valuable parkland into the heart of Rutledge Hill. So in this view, you can also note the relationship between that Rutledge Square Water Plaza corner and the nearby existing buildings. The addition of residential units in this area will increase the supply of downtown housing options responding to the need for more housing units in the urban core. The popularity of tourism has created significant pressure to build short-term rental units. One condition of approval for this OHM is to remove STRs as an allowed use. Downtown residents rely on, and in turn help support, alternative transportation modes, including walking, biking, and transit, and this project site is three blocks from land planned for a major transit center in Sobro along Lafayette between Fourth Avenue South and Fifth Avenue South. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. The Nashville Department of Transportation recommends approval with conditions noted here. A traffic impact study was submitted and reviewed, and the conditions include significant traffic and infrastructural improvements. Staff recommendation is to approve with these conditions or defer without all conditions. Conditions include verification of all bonus height actions, ensuring public access to the park, burying overhead power lines, looking into using district energy service, and, as noted before, the restriction of converting residential use to short-term rental Staff finds this project meets the outlined criteria for overall height modifications. In addition to including a 1.36-acre new park for this neighborhood, all the parking will be below grade, contributing to a more dynamic and lively streetscape. One of Metro's goals is to enhance this downtown neighborhood with a focus on residential program to support a vibrant level of density. This project will contribute 877 new units to this area responding to the housing demand downtown. As noted, this growing density will be supported by a future major transit center located walking distance three blocks away on Lafayette, helping to encourage alternative transportation modes to support the surrounding community. Staff recommends approval with conditions for this project due to its allocation of more than half the site dedicated to open park space with all parking below grade and its clear residential programmatic focus. All of these elements are supported in turn by the proposed muted architectural language appropriate for this important downtown neighborhood.
Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing as the applicant chimes in here. You'll have 10 minutes. State your name and address, and you can reserve two minutes for rebuttal.
Sure. Thank you, Nora. Thank you Commissioners, Councilmen. I'm -- thank you for having us here today. We are very excited to actually share with you part of it what Nora has shared already with you, our design vision for Rutledge Hill Mixed-Use Development. My name is Sasha Zelgic. I'm a principal with Gensler. We are architects on this project, and I will be presenting on behalf of our development team. We will be sharing a slide deck that I'll start in a minute, and I'll go through it in a pretty quick time for about maybe five minutes and follow it with about two and a half minutes of animation that we would like to run towards the end, so I hope you will have, we will have enough time to do that, and leaving some time to respond. I'd like first to start by acknowledging great partnership we had over the course of the last six months with Nashville Planning Department. Feedback, guidance, and challenges that we got from the team were invaluable to us. In that respect, we really appreciate the recommendations by planning staff that Nora just shared, and we understand that these conditions, there are conditions to move this project forward, and our development team is in agreement with those. We also had multiple meetings with various community stakeholders, neighborhood representatives, and we listened to their feedback and worked hard to implement their suggestions in our design. We think this process has fundamentally led us to develop a better design, one that will create a world-class design for Nashville and which I will present in a second. So maybe next slide? Next slide? So this is just quickly, you know, I think our site is located, you know, with Leah on the south or bordered with Leah on the south, Second Avenue to the west, Peabody to the north, and Rutledge to the east. So if you go to the next slide, our, what I think, what I said, our site is on the northern most edge of the Rutledge Hill, surrounded by Sobro and Lafayette. And if you go to the next slide, this was really an important context for us because it really created a vision of what the future allocated density will be that will surround us and with that really affect our site planning. These buildings here represented what is either approved, as Nora said, or for development or available as a right for construction. So if you go to the next slide. Our concept starting point was to move a proposed parking below grade and dedicate majority of the development of the land that is available for development to a public park. This will be a large public amenity and for the benefit of existing and future communities, and in the same time, we are reallocating density on the site to respond to the future high-rise development to the north and west and existing building scale and massing that is mid-rise and low-rise to the south and east. So if we go to the next slide. Conceptually, we're envisioning a spectacular public park space to be feature of the overall development. It will be a, it will step through the site and connect communities by being accessible from all sides. So if you go to the next slide, yeah, the previous slide was essentially just a quick view of the overall site plan. If you go to the next slide, this is essentially a Rutledge Square. This is where we are basically pulling buildings away from the corner, creating a gesture to the City Lights Development to the east and then to the 101 historic building to the south. And with that gesture, we really are trying to really frame those views and also create moments of entry into the overall park. If you go to the next slide, these are some precedent imageries that we think will really reference of how we envision this space to look like. If you go to the next slide, and then again, next, these two slides really represented how we intend to connect the park from a Second Avenue and Peabody Street, given a grade change, and where we are locating public parking structures that are all below grades. Streetscape is going to be very active, allowing retail to connect and spill into the park as well as to the streets. If you go to the next slide, this is example of, or reference of what that could look like. If you go to the next slide. And then this is, in a central part of our park will be an oasis. We intend for this space to be a unique and inclusive. It will create a sense of calm, gathering, and celebration. And we will have a video coming in a minute that will show how this space really works in more detail. So if you go to the next slide, these are in more, some of the additional views of what potentially could be. Wanted to make sure that I referenced that we did look at Second and Peabody Development as we were developing a landscaping plan and overall park plan for our site. We wanted it to be a complementary to the overall neighborhood, inclusive of the Second and Peabody Developments. If you go to the next slide. As Nora said, our site open space is about 57% from 3.4 acres. And if you go to the next slide, and most of it will be accessible by general public. And we intend to have site access for parking and loading below grade from three streets, leaving the Leah Avenue unintact when it comes to that. So if you go to the next view, so this is now a view looking at the overall development from the southeast, seeing a downtown skyline in the back. The building to the left is the 39-story residential multifamily building. The building to the right is a 32-story residential building, and then building in the center connected with the park is the hotel development. So if we go to the next slide, this is a different, this is a view looking to the south. And I wanted to just touch quickly on our guiding principles. We really have established a strong guiding principles to honor the legacy, create a connected parkscape. Pedestrian scale and texture was really important to us, creating a healthy lifestyle and really celebrating Nashville. And if you go to the next slide, all of these align really well with the design principles for redevelopment districts in Nashville. So if you go to the next slide, we were really looking at ways of connecting to the authenticity of the city, specifically of the Rutledge Hill, and have drawn a lot of information from use of masonry and detailing and applied it in a more contemporary way on our design. So if you can run a video now, that would be great. I've learned earlier today that we will not be able to hear music, and we invested a lot of time creating a music for this video, but I'll just walk you through some of the views. the camera is really navigating now towards the Rutledge Hill. Hopefully you can see this, so highlighting really where our site is, looking at the overall development. And what we wanted to do with this video is really just to bring to you a sense of experience as you're walking around the site and seeing, you know, how, from a pedestrian scale, you begin to experience the neighborhood. I think park really being a key driver for the development. And so creating these moments that are different, diverse, will give you an opportunity to, you know, have a moment for yourself but also celebrate it with your friends. Access points into the park. Hotel property that's to the left will be opening up into the park, and I should mention, I should make sure to mention that at the pedestrian level, our development will be opening to both streetscape and to the public park with a retail program. So this is now the Second and Leah Tower, 39-story building. One of the key elements in this building will be a very distinct feature at the 2/3 to the height, which is the amenity location. Yes?
Pause. Say, minute and a half.
Sure.
We hear you want to reserve a minute and a half of your time. Okay.
To respond, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You have 1:33. I saw it.
Check the tape.
Yep. All right. With that, do we have anyone here speaking in support of the project? Okay, if you guys will come forward, you'll have two minutes. State your name and address.
My name is Dean Strutulie, 509 Second Ave. South. I am the developer of the Four Seasons as well as the pending project at Second and Peabody, which came before this body recently. I'm here to unequivocally support this project, and I'm here for, for support for some very specific reasons. One, when we were doing our project, our biggest fear is that someone would come forward with this space and build another four-story concrete garage with a five-story plywood box on top of it. Horrible. As I said before, your underlying zoning here is really counter to all of the design and city planning propositions that you put forward. This project creates great architecture, great open space, great connectivity, and a welcoming presence at the streetscape all the way around the building. And if you walk around our neighborhood and you look at what has been produced to date and even the projects that are under construction, the urban scape, the place where people experience these buildings are terrible because they're garages, and you force some minor retail up against the sidewalk with no sense of relief, no sense of presence, no sense of welcoming. This project has got great architecture. We love the way it complements the park that we're building. This integrates well with that park. We love their amenity package, their welcoming sense at the street. Putting parking underground is key. Hopefully the city adopts that on a go-forward basis. So we're very happy with it, and we support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh! There you go.
Howdy, Roger Brown, 401, 407 Driftwood. It's down on the river. We employ people. We have different businesses from a worm factory, believe it or not. We grow worms. And steel businesses down there, employees. The problem is, in this city, as you know, Jim and I just, Cap Jim and I, announced 500 new jobs growing to 1,000. Oracle just announced 85, 8,500 new jobs. Amazon, 6,600. DIC, over 350, growing over 500. 13,075 jobs are open in the downtown core today. There's plus another doing research, about 5,000 jobs coming to downtown Nashville. That is over 22,000 jobs. We don't have enough housing. Our employees are having a hard time finding a place to live, a place to rent, and there's two ways to do this. One is increase the supply. If you take horizontal communities and make them vertical, people can have a place to live, increasing the supply goes down. We have to address the housing for the 22,000 people coming to work downtown. One bedroom is over 2,000 a month. A two-bedroom is over $3,700 a month. Not to mention, once you're here, you got to have a place to walk your dog, to enjoy the community. Nashville lacks green space, and one of the things we need is more green space and open space for the community. And so I think this is good for the businesses, for the restaurants, for the employees, and for other people. And I thank each one of y'all for supporting this and hopefully approve it, and appreciate you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Larry Papel, 4320 Signal Hill Drive in Nashville. I'm also a managed, the managing member of Corner Partnership, which is an investor in much of downtown Nashville, including the Second and Peabody project, which we have under contract to Mr. Strutulie's company, which you approved back in August. We, of course, were concerned with what might go on this 3.4-acre site. We're delighted that the applicant has brought forth such a great plan. The park, the, as Roger said, addition of housing to downtown is critical. I know it doesn't necessarily address affordable housing, which everybody is concerned with, but less housing means less affordable housing generally. We know that from our history, so more housing helps. This is upper-scale housing, but we have lots of upper-scale jobs coming here. There is demand. The open space is perfect. I was born in Manhattan. I'm drawn to tall buildings for lots of reasons, and park space in urban areas is hard to do under the base zoning. It doesn't happen, can't happen. So these exceptions are extraordinarily important to creating neighborhoods that will draw people, keep people, have 24/7. It's better for security. It's just better all around. So I urge you to approve this. It will be a great addition to downtown. I used to have a client who said, "Quality creates demand." This kind of quality will create more demand for downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in support? Okay. Anyone speaking in opposition? If you want to come forward.
Yes.
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 Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Douglas Berry. I'm an attorney in Nashville with Miller Martin Law Firm, and my residence address is 3826 Whitland Ave., 37205. I represent Stephen Snyder, Andrew Decker, and Gregory Brettz, who are residents of City Lights Condominiums. I have requested before the meeting five minutes to speak because even though they're not an official organization, they are, in some sense, directly or indirectly represent the interests of the -- is that granted? I'm grateful for that. I'll take a, since I have five minutes, I want to mention that I, I think the name is Lee, Colonel Luke Lee, who was a United States Senator, publisher of The Tennessean, part of a plot to kidnap the Kaiser, gave the land for Percy Warner Park. So maybe we should get street name modifications based on things that are ahistorical, but I believe we're talking Lee Avenue, just for the record. The visual from I have turned in a brief, multi-page brief, that explains why it's problematic for the Planning Commission illegally to exercise the authority they are exercising. I'm going to expect you tonight to concede that point. You've obviously been advised that it is legal, but I want you to think about, so we're going to assume it is without conceding that, but there's two criteria, two bases for granting a height variance or a height modification. One, beyond of the standards for modification of standards, and what that requires is that the applicant identify a site-specific issue, which means a problem, and also that the modification complies with the intent and purpose of the ordinance of the standard. Well, the standard here is height. It's not all this other stuff. So the height standard has to do with compatibility, the height with all the urban neighborhoods in Nashville. So clearly to allow a height that's six or seven times the permitted height in the zone is not compatible with the intent of that section, that standard. What has happened now is in addition to that, most recently in October of this year, the Metro Council has amended the ordinance and talked about additional criteria, if you will, for granting a height modification. But all of these are things like, I mean, things like, it's totally subjective criteria, contribution to the skyline? What in the world does that mean? I mean, I see peregrine falcons flying around downtown all the time from my office tower. I think they contribute to the skyline. What? That is so subjective and it's not enforceable. It is planner speak, but it's not enforceable as an ordinance. Trust me. Some of the things that the applicant talks about may, and this is the real point, may be worthy, good goals and good planning. I think it's exciting in many ways. It's a gorgeous design, but the thing is, it's not in the right neighborhood for that. If you want that neighborhood to be the right neighborhood, let's stop and do the hard work. I know things are going very fast in Nashville. We need to stop, amend the downtown plan, Nashville Next Plan, and go to the council and amend the ordinance to allow this. To the extent that you're doing this on a case-by-case basis, the Planning Commission is legislating. The Planning Commission has no power to legislate. It has no power to grant variances. It simply does not have that power. This may be the niftiest, and the same with Second and Peabody. It is ultra vires, meaning Latin for outside of the power, for the Planning Commission to undertake to do this. The Planning Commission has no authority to grant variances, which is what a modification of standards is, by a different name. That belongs to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So I don't know, the fact that the Metro Council has amended this seven times since 2015 means nothing because the requirements of state law haven't changed. And until the Second and Peabody project, this commission was granting modifications of standards for height, there were increments of the, if it's smaller increments, if you took the base height, the bonus height, you're going to get 10, you get 500 bonus, we'll give you two more. I represented a client who had a building in the North Gulls. They, I think they ended up with 18, 10 plus 5 plus 2. I think all these developers, Capital View and others, who have complied with the ordinance are going to be shocked when they hear that all they had to do was ask for the ordinance to be turned upside down. So you're going to hear from some of our folks, and thank you for your time. Bye.
You'll have two minutes and start with your name and address and--
My name's Alex Hirsch. I live at City Lights condo, so 20 Rutledge Street. Thanks, guys, for hearing us out tonight. You know, this is a pretty simple case. You know, we live in this neighborhood. There's a law that has a height, and this building is going up, and it's six times what that height should be. You know, as somebody who lives there tonight, I hope we can gain an understanding from you guys as to why this rule for, you know, this property was just allowed. And if we're going to have that type of precedence where on a case-by-case basis, we're going to change the rules for some and not change the rules for other, I mean, I think we need to have a discussion about that. So, you know, it's a fact that, you know, this lies in the Rutledge Hills subject district that was brought up tonight. Every iteration of the published planning documents from the original downtown code, together with dozens of amendments, including as recently as October of this year, the South Broadway Strategic Master Plan and the Nashville Next Plan adopted in 2017, has identified this as a downtown neighborhood and drew significant distinctions from the downtown core. So tonight, you know, I just want to get your guys' thoughts because to me, this is really simple. Six times what the legal limit is what this property is going to do to our neighborhood where we've been living here, so.
Thank you.
My name is Denise Luce. I own a home at City Lights located at 20 Rutledge Street. To continue with my neighbor's point, we are not in the downtown core. The Rutledge Hills sub-district has always been labeled as suitable for mid-rise heights with complementary height scale and massing that goes along with the existing buildings. This current proposal encompasses a vertical neighborhood of extreme heights that will forever change the skyline of Nashville and cause large areas of our historic district to be in shadows for significant portions of the day throughout the year. Additionally, a 29-story hotel tower with round-the-clock employment and transient flows seems to provide the equivalent of short-term rentals, which the planning staff has proposed to not be permitted in this neighborhood. The staff report that supports this project fails to offer any suggestions as to the logic for abandoning these existing standards, which have been uniformly enforced, until this proposal and the approval of Second and Peabody by the Congress group. We are not against development. We just want our mid-rise neighborhood to remain mid-rise. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much. My name is Bruce Camber. I'm also a owner at City Lights, 20 Rutledge. All the comments by our group tonight will be online, and you can go to httpnashvilleusa.org and read more. Words and semantics are important. Centrum's proposal is not a modification of code. It is a waiver of any height limitation. This is not a best practice. This is a complete waiver of existing code limitations on an ad hoc basis that benefits a single property owner, and it encourages suspicion and doubt about everybody's intention. Appearances are important. The process with these two developments, both Congress Group and Centrum, appears to be more of a back-room approach where approvals get rewarded. For example, the Congress Group made a multi-billion, a million-dollar payment to the Barnes Housing Project Trust Fund within a matter of a few days of the Planning Commission's approval, preliminary approval. None of the governance groups, such as the Urban Land Institute or the State Zoning Code Board, would ever consider these activities as the past few months' best practices. Also, the tax successor was obviously unaware about the DTC modification standards. The property was sold at, was valued at 21. It was sold at 34. What you do here makes a big difference and has deep and lasting consequences. I'll go on, but I won't.
Thank you very much.
You can't. You can't. My name's Hattie Bryant. I own a home at City Lights located at 20 Rutledge, and I want to add to Mr. Camber's comments. The Congress Group's payout to nonprofits is an obvious quid pro quo that stinks and should embarrass the Planning Department. The Planning Department's gushy, passionate approval of the Congress Group's project obviously emboldens Centrum to push for even more concessions that you are being asked to agree to now. Your job is to oversee the Planning Department, not to rubber stamp its recommendations. The current application should be rejected because it does not comply with requirements for the overhaul height modification as required by the recent amendments to the DDC. At each of the community hearings I attended, the developer's representative, Mr. Powers, who's here, was asked, is the developer able to comply with Rutledge Hills sub-district height limits? Each time, he said, oh, yes, we can comply. We can build below-grade parking and put four stories on top. But they, the developers and the planning staff, felt that a vertical neighborhood is more appropriate. Who feels it's more appropriate? Metro employees like Ms. Kempf, who do not live on Rutledge Hill, or developers who do not live in Nashville? This is completely subjective. We disagree about the open space. They're saying 57%. Fine. We like our open space inside of our residents to enjoy. Please do not allow your own rules to be tossed based purely on the personal preferences of individuals in the Planning Department. We want our mid-rise neighborhood to stay mid-rise. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here speaking in opposition?
Madam Chair, I think we do need to point out that attacks on the characterization of individuals in the Planning Commission or Planning Department are not part of the discussion here and should not even be brought up. We're talking about planning issues, and we ask you to continue to discuss planning issues that you have a problem with.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Before my time starts, I would like to ask if I could have a brief minute at the end of this to address an issue regarding the councilman that is representing my district.
No, I'm sorry. That's not appropriate for this.
Okay. But my question is, if your councilman does not call you back and then states that on the news channel two, that the neighborhood's boundaries, where it stops and starts, are not clearly laid out and they no longer know where they are, I think that is important for us to, for the city and the Planning Commission to know. So thank you. My name is Melissa Adams. I live at 621 Second Avenue South, and I'm sorry, I did not realize that my time was, had started already because I was asking if I could have that minute.
It's okay. Just keep going and--
Okay. It's brief. I've written it out. Thank you. I live, I'm a, I've been, I live in a home built in 1799 and have been a resident in the Rutledge Hills neighborhood for 16 years. I'm here tonight to state that the approval of this project is not acceptable. This is the second time within a year that I have been before the Planning Commission to try and protect both my neighborhood, my home, and my city and for the same issue. The regulating plans for the Rutledge Hills sub-district found in the downtown code clearly states that the Rutledge Hills neighborhood includes a variety of residential and civic historical buildings and further states that this area is largely intact and new buildings are of complementary height, scale, and massing. The neighborhood is currently zoned for six stories with a bonus of up to seven. This project consists of three separate buildings that exceeds that current zoning height by over five times the amount, ranging from 29 to 39 stories. The boundaries for Rutledge Hills neighborhood are also clearly laid out and stated in the downtown code at the Planning Department and is acceptable to the developers prior to purchasing these properties. The design by this developer in no way complements the historical feel nor character of the existing neighborhood. It will break up and divide both the Rutledge Hills neighborhood and the consistent streetscapes that currently exist of Second Avenue South. I am also concerned about the structural integrity and the natural light and views that will definitely be affected.
Okay.
I am not against, I just had a brief minute because it started, if you don't mind. I am not against new development. There are numerous projects throughout the city that have both complemented and improved the city and its existing neighborhoods, including the recently announced plans for the restoration of Second Avenue South. However, if this project is approved tonight, it will permanently change the nature of the city of Nashville, the consistent historical feel that currently flows from Second Avenue South--
Thank you, thank you.
--to Second Avenue North, the historical value of the Ryman property, the historic landscape of the Rutledge Hills neighborhood--
Man, we've gone over the two minutes.
--and set an unstoppable precedent for future development.
Ma'am, you need to respect the chairman of the commission--
I am.
You're not.
But what I'm saying is, I'm a resident, and my councilman is not respecting me. So I'm just asking--
Your neighbors have the same rules. You must follow the same rules.
I know, but I'm asking for one last statement.
No, 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 ma'am.
I am asking the Planning Commission tonight to do the same by denying the approval of this project and uphold the current building codes and restrictions so that it holds on to the historical feel of what both residents and visitors have fallen in love with, which is a small-town southern feel, because this completely change is the existing historical connectivity between Second Avenue South and Second Avenue North. And I thank you for your time. I apologize for going over the time in any disrespect that I have portrayed, but this is a very important matter, and so I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's do our best to keep to our two minutes now. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Steve Snyder. I own and reside in a property in City Lights. I'm here to encourage you to reject this proposal. This entire process is flawed. The point I would point to, what I would point to as an example of this process being flawed, is the meeting minutes of your September meeting, the video which is posted online. At three hours and 18 minutes of that meeting, your own executive director said, based on her own research, the purpose of these sub-districts, and I'll remind you, we're in the Rutledge Hills sub-districts, was to focus development in the Gull and focus development in the downtown core. This is a downtown neighborhood. By inference, your executive director suggested that you should not apply the standards that are the written laws of this city. I don't understand how you can make a suggestion to an elected, appointed body like yours not to comply with the provisions of law. So what are we doing tonight? What we're doing tonight is using this modification of standards in the form of an overhaul, overall height modification. I ask each one of you members of the commission, if this project were across the street from your front door and the proposal was to build something six and a half times taller than what's allowed by statute, or six and a half times taller than anything that exists in your neighborhood, how would you feel? And let's compound that. If it's to the west of your front door and your home is going to be enveloped in shadows for significant portions of the afternoon throughout the course of the year, decreasing the value of your home, how would you vote? I ask you, please, reject this proposal. It does not comply with the downtown code. If you want to do something along these lines, amend the downtown code. Don't use an extreme ripping up of the existing law through a modification. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in opposition?
Hi, I'm Greg Brettz. I too reside at the building right across the street here at City Lights, and I was at the meeting a month or two ago when we were talking about the development that's, what, Second and Third between Peabody and Leah. And at that meeting, you know, we expressed our concern about what it meant for Rutledge Hill, and many of you said, oh, well, Rutledge Hill, it's special. It's different. You know, what a, you know, we're okay with this concept of doing something as kind of a one-off for that project, and just because we do a one-off for them doesn't mean that any developer that comes and buys a critical amount of space then can build whatever they want to. But it seems like we're headed down a path where buy more space and then you get the green light to do whatever you want to, and that doesn't seem like it's good policy. And in fact, you all even agreed that it's not good policy because that's how you set up the development for the downtown core and the sub-districts. So I'm confused by the notion that what you granted earlier in the year for Second and Third and Peabody and Leah has now become kind of the standard for anybody. You know, as a small building with 71 units, you get some minstrosity like this being built right across the street-- right across the street. We're going to have to do special assessments just to keep our building clean. You know, they're going to go down six stories. Who knows how long construction is going to take, dust. We're just going to have a number of problems that none of us contemplated when we purchased our units because we thought that what was in the, the rules were going to be followed and just a little bit shocked that that's apparently, it was for consideration but not really a rule. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in opposition? If not, if the developer would like to come back and you have a minute and...
Nora, could you pull up the slide? It has the five conditions of the overall height modification. Just going to try and get back to center here. Not sure I can respond to all the comments that were made, except one, the backroom dealings. I'm surprised to hear that, given that we met three or four times with Justice City Lights group directly, in some cases going into their building, in their units, looking over the site and trying to understand how we can make changes. And we did make many, many changes to try and improve the plan from their perspective. But this is what guided us. You know, these five principles, unique architecture, I think that's self-evident, as Sasha presented. These are extraordinarily unique buildings. Along the streetscape, you see we're using the materials that were common to Rutledge Hill, the brick and the masonry and the high-quality products that will activate the streetscape and make it look beautiful and fit within the context of the neighborhood. The contribution to the skyline, again, it's, it goes along with unique architecture. You can see the jewel box and the beacon on the 39-story building, an almost impractical floor plate of 7,000 feet that is really designed to be remarkable to the skyline. And in terms of improvements to the projects, relationships to surrounding properties, I would point to the park plan where we deliberately connected to Rutledge Street and upper Rutledge Hill, connected to Sobro, and connected to Second Avenue across from the second, from the second Peabody project. And then finally, in terms of improvement to the character of the neighborhood, we are really trying to strengthen the neighborhood by creating amenities that will draw people together. This is a park space that will increase the connection between the neighborhoods and strengthen Rutledge Hill, the neighborhood itself.
That's time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, I will go ahead and declare the public hearing closed. We had a couple of questions that I thought might be good for our council to address before we begin our deliberations. And I guess just the question about the Planning Commission's authority when it comes to approving the height modifications.
Excuse me.
Yes, I just want to...
No, I'm...
Okay, just, just as an update, I know that we've had a similar project come before, but the downtown code is part of the metro code, it's incorporated by Metro Council, and according to the downtown code, you have the ability to make an overhaul height modification so long as it meets the factors that have been outlined. So, that's within your authority.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Tibbs, I'm going to put you on the spot to get us started.
Well, thank you, Vice Chair. Well, I'm going to start with the five principles that are up here right now and just remember the rendering behind you, but, well, first of all, I'm going to really commend the design team for, one of the things that I really did like the most was the public park part of it. You know, even the one that we just recently saw, I think the way you guys made an engaging area for the public was extraordinary. I mean, and I think when you go to other cities and see something like that, what I hope is, is that as other developers come to town, they'll start to see the real sensitivity to how people use those, you know, public spaces from a pedestrian level. I think sometimes it's so much more of just a, you know, we just, hey, we gave you your space, you've got your space, whereas I think you guys actually put together a real events, things that can really happen and moments, kind of using your word throughout the whole area. And I believe that, you know, we have such a problem with public green space in downtown area, the way you guys approached it and designed it, I think, was, was exceptional, actually. And that does, you know, also get to the exceptional strong streetscape. The designs were, actually, I thought, really worked well with what we're looking at in the downtown core. It's almost like, in many ways, I wish there were things that you guys and characteristics that were actually used in other parts of development. And I could see where there, when the developer brought up about trying to make these openings so that they'd be a little bit more respectful, you know, it's not as massive as it could be, probably, quite frankly, having these openings and areas that can actually increase views and increase some, you know, transparency through the site. It's, the approach you guys took was, was, you know, way forward-thinking than others that I've seen, actually. It's almost now you've raised the bar, I believe, about what we are, as a commission, are going to be expecting and probably the city of Nashville, that's just becoming a little bit more, you know, conscientious of what we really need here as opposed to just, you know, hitting the numbers. And I think, you know, as far as regards to the, well, and I do like the way the massing of the building, how you, you know, opened up pieces of it, it's not just a big giant, you know, monolith kind of thing, you know, that you opened up a lot of different areas to it. So, you guys, the design is definitely, you hit these five points, you know, almost easily, knocked them out, as far as I'm concerned. I do have a couple of questions for staff of that, and I don't know if the designer needs to answer it, but as far as the grades that are going through the park, do you have those as far, and I guess I can make sure that it is an accessible, is it is, is it set up for accessibility? Okay, I saw some ramps, but then I thought I saw a stair headed to the ramp, so I wasn't sure of that. So, I got your nod, so I agree with that. So...
Do you want to get that on the record, though, just to make sure?
Yeah, that's probably good. The nod, I may not have the...
From the architecture team? Yeah.
Yeah, probably better come up to the mic and say yes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, the answer is yes. The, all three access points to the, to the park will be accessible and many others around the perimeter of the buildings.
While you're there, too, can you talk about the different elevations through the, through the park, if you have that information?
Sure, yeah, of course, yeah. So, the park really slopes down from the uppermost point at the corner of the Lea and Rutledge, and actually, that area is probably the most flat in, also in the same sense. So, as you navigate the park diagonally across essentially, you know, the natural slope is about 37 to 38 feet, as Nora mentioned in her opening. And so, you know, we have planned the parking below grade, you know, at about 10-feet intervals. So, we are, you know, essentially, we are stepping parking as we step in park to, in order to respond to that. And then strategically are positioning places where the stairs will be. You've seen some of the urban elements, if you will, that will keep people in place, like some of those stadium-steating type of the stairs that are, that we've, again, positioned right across, for example, off of the second and Peabody developments, you can actually connect to that park and contemplate, you know, enjoy a little bit. But as you navigate, there, you know, these, these, from an accessibility standpoint within the park, you should be able to do the whole thing down in an accessible way.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that. So, you know, just based strictly off of the architecture, you know, I, I think you've hit these five spots as well. I'll get, let maybe some of my other commissioners, if anyone, to get more into some of the other types of dialogue with it, but from the architect and design standpoint, I, you know, this was, I hit it out the park.
Commissioner Blackshear.
This one's a really tough one for me. I can hear everything that Commissioner Tibbs is saying, and obviously, he's looking at the item from a different perspective, perhaps a way more informed perspective as far as architecture goes. But I, I think that both sides had great points, and although we obviously need to be respectful of people in the process, I can definitely see why someone would be impassioned about this because it relates to their home. I appreciate the, our council's explanation about our role and our power, and I know that apparently it's still being contested, but we're going to move forward, like we do have the ability to grant additional height based on the various reasons that are listed, both the numbered reasons and then the paragraph regarding consideration can be given in other instances regarding height modification. I guess my question is, and this is a question maybe for staff and kind of asking more of your analysis, how much height would be too much height? We're, there's a great delta between seven and then the height that is being proposed for this, and I'm not sure that 10, 12, 15 would be acceptable either to the neighbors, but this does seem to be an extraordinary amount of height that's being given. And I see that the, the unique architecture, the improvement to the character of the neighborhood, maybe all of these things are being satisfied, but I wonder, at what point do you, do you stop? I mean, it could have gone higher, what was the analysis in the granting of the additional height, and at what point is too much height? At what point is height, too much height for this area?
That's a great question. Come to the design studio debate soon. Do you want to show the policy map?
So, can you point to the various sub-districts there and describe some of the height in the adjacent districts and current?
Yeah, I might, well, yes. I might use, well, no, this is fine. So, yes, but just, you said, Lucy, the existing, just what is allowable per code right now?
Right, I mean, well, not, not to get too technical about it, but we'll look at what's allowed under the current policy, we'll look at adjacent districts. This happens to be an area where you have the confluence of a few different areas that are all in the downtown plan. So, we consider this to be downtown. And so, as was considered in the second and Peabody case, you're adjacent to unlimited height, right? But you're also adjacent to a historic district where we very much have to give thought to the context. And so, then the question really becomes, how do you accomplish that, which is why we require site-specific plans? I'm going to say something that I hope won't be too controversial, but when I first got to Nashville, I was asking a lot of questions of the staff about certain sub-districts. Why did Midtown develop the way it did? Why did the gulch develop the way it did? And one of the things that I heard about Midtown was that the Planning Department likes to go in and do big comprehensive plans, big assessments, up, you know, do everything 10, 15, 20 properties at once, and that's what we did in Midtown, very close to a number of historic properties. We upzoned everything. And we did it because of the amp, and probably it was the right decision from a land use and transportation planning perspective, but what it meant was that we have been living for 10, how many years since the Midtown plan? We have been living with an upzoned area that had some site-specific considerations, but they're very limited. And when I learned about that case and I looked at this area, I felt very strong reservation going in and basically making lots of assumptions about what the bulk standards that would be appropriate. Because of the sensitive character of this area, it demands a more site-specific response. So, when you ask, what is the, what is the appropriate height, you look at the adjacent policies which allow for unlimited, and many of those are building much higher than this, right? If you just go up to the circle. And then you look at the historic districts, you look at the relationship of the river, you think about the green space as being a great transition. I am far more comfortable assessing appropriate height on a site-by-site area in a space that is this complex than sort of asserting the kinds of bulk standards and planning standards that we would typically, you would typically demand of the Planning Department, rightfully. And so, again, transitions, open space, looking at existing context and the things that we want to protect, and then the areas where are necessary to develop. This is almost four acres in downtown. And so, that in and of itself is a formidable challenge from a design perspective because it, in and of itself, creates context, right? And this is an area that's characterized by some important historic properties, but also, you know, new buildings such as City Lights and a lot of properties that have already been entitled but aren't yet developed. And so, I think, you know, KVB, in my view, hasn't been as successful as it could be because the buildings aren't taller, and they could be. So, given the width of the street and the like. So, I've given you more than you asked for, but I'm not going to give you the typical bulk standard kind of question because this demands something a little bit different.
Well, that was really helpful. I mean, obviously, you can just see very drastic changes in the height, and so the question, when I was looking at this, the question is, why did it have to go so high? I mean, even if one thought that appropriate, the appropriate height was taller than the six or seven that was allowed, why does it go up to 30-plus?
One other thing I'll add, and I think the staff could speak to this, is my understanding during some of the community meetings, initially, several of the buildings were lower and the open space was narrower, and there was sort of a desire to open the open space up. And so, then you're just looking at urban design factors, the proportional relationships and the things like that, and so, I think those are other factors.
Well, it's really helpful, and obviously, we do, I guess it's still under, it's being contested, but I think we do have the ability to determine whether there is additional height that's being modified. So, I'm really interested to hear other commissioners' thoughts. I think that it makes a lot of sense for additional height to be granted based on the various reasons that were enumerated. I'm not, I'm not completely convinced at this moment that we should be going up as high as we're going. I mean, it's a beautiful plan, obviously, there are a lot of great benefits to it. It just seems like quite a drastic change from the, the seven feet or the seven stories that were, that would otherwise be allowed. But I do think, I do agree that the, there are reasons why additional height could be granted, and I agree that, you know, sound mind to make the decision that it is appropriate to go up to the, the height that's being requested. So, I'm really interested to hear what other commissioners have to say.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Well, this is a difficult one because what I'm reviewing and analyzing, I've been through lots of, you know, like a seventh stage of grievance and, you know, joy and, you know, those emotional stages. Because, but, you know, as a, I think, like a neighborhood standpoint, it looks like a zone change. You know, your next door, a neighbor, used to be open space, now you are inviting 100, you know, plus neighbors. And so, you know, when we talk about suburban subdivision regulation, we are inviting more neighbors by using cluster lot option. So, many people in the suburban area says, you know, my house is one acre, why do we have to live with, you know, 7,500 square foot? I want, you know, okay with the development, but I want that house to be like my house, one acre. So, in that sense, I do understand, you know, we are living in a seven-story. So, I want that my new next-door building want to be seven-story. So, in that sense, I totally get it. So, Lisa or Noah, if you don't mind, could you bring up the concept picture? It shows like a block and then can evolve to a high-rise? Okay, so, you know, like this evolving thing, my emotion went to, you know, okay, pros and cons and how, and how would feel and so forth. So, like, you know, Director Kempf said, if we were to kind of do the bulk standards, we will see those concrete block, and it will not be benefit to the community, and yes, it will keep, you know, mid-rise, but what's the, you know, benefit to the community? So, I see lots of open space and unique design, and I think, you know, if you take a look at that design itself, I think everybody likes it. So, the next question is, that design, you know, with open space and a high-rise and interesting architecture and difference usage of material, is that location is the right location? So, that... So that will be the question. So I have been kind of thinking about, uh, many things because, you know, we are literally shortage of house. I would love to see more affordable housing, various price point because, you know, that's what we need. And, but, you know, we do not have two to, you know, ask for inclusionally zoning or, you know, those things. So that's, you know, out of our area. But, but, you know, if we don't have a house, we don't have, you know, affordable housing or more, you know, different type of housing. So I was thinking, if we built the house and then by, you know, five years, 10 years, if legislature change, if our tax structure change, one of those unit may be able to convert to affordable housing. We do have those, you know, opportunity and option. So I, you know, see that as a, you know, kind of evolution of my thinking. So that's other kind of one pro, uh, option. And then another one is, uh, you know, we have to have housing and the lifestyle, how people will change if the vertical, uh, living vertical community will be adopted by Nashvilleian, new and old. And we do still have more people, you know, some people who are used to suburban living style, but I think some people are more adapting urban lifestyle. And that means, you know, maybe they are not as much as prone to driving either. Because, you know, uh, I am still thinking about housing, like yes, to go anywhere, get in the car and then park. But if I'm living in those urban area, uh, more, you know, convenient area and then, you know, circular bus, green bus or blue bus comes in more frequently, I will ditch the car. Because, you know, as you know, I was living in Tokyo. So, you know, when I was living in Tokyo, I would drive my car maybe once a month because to get on the public transportation, you know, bus or a train is much, much quicker and then very reliable. And if you get in the car, you wouldn't know. Sometimes it may take 15 minutes. Sometimes it may take hour and 20 minutes. So for that, I think people and living and community will be evolving. So in the future, like a thinking, forward-thinking point, I can see that may work and will work and, you know, housing is needed. So that's why I was kind of going, you know, back and forth and up and down. And as far as, you know, the unique Nashville point, because we would love to have a different character and we would like to preserve a second avenue as a historic second avenue and, you know, those type of architecture. And then we would like to have open space and we'd like rural area in White Creek. So in order for us to preserve those open space, historic structure, and then we still want to have some density, we have no choice but go vertical. So for that sense, I kind of understand, you know, why, uh, staff is thinking that way. So for that point of view, like a really, like a, you know, базой point of view, like overall Nashville, uh, I think this plan may not work today. Some people may hate it, but if we approve today with so many, uh, you know, different point of view, I can see it will work. And I can see, you know, first thing, you know, design-wise, I would, I, I, I thought it was really interesting to hear the second and pivot, you know, development team embraced it because I thought, wow, we had such an interesting, you know, like a triangular space and then try to give more airspace and light space. And then a building across the street comes in and, you know, diagonal to us and then block. And then I did a little bit more detailed view and actually it has more space and actually it will give more air circulation as, you know, Brian, uh, Commissioner Tibbs said. It really thoughtful design. So I think it addressed not blocking and more cohesive with, you know, other building. So for that sense, I think it will hitting all the point why we should be able to approve those modifications. So, you know, if we do have authority or not, it's maybe some opposing council may disagree, but our legal counsel say we do have authority. So for that recommendation, I totally see stuff's, uh, point. And assuming, and they agree with, uh, no short-term rental, that's good. And if that were to, you know, turn into short-term rental, I would be totally not in favor. But if they are committed to bring actual housing, I can see many, you know, plus. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Withers?
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair. This is my first height modification that, that I've seen as, as a commissioner. I've heard of them, but I have not paid a lot of attention to them because we don't typically have those, uh, in East Nashville. But, um, one of the things I wanted to ask, uh, just procedurally and, and for, to educate myself and maybe others too, is, um, if the planning commission grants this height modification, how do we know that we get this design that I hear that everyone likes so much? Like, can they just build a larger building? Or how do we know that we get this product if we grant this height modification?
There's site-specific proposals with detailed design standards and there is a very strict process that if they want to modify it, got to come right back here.
Great. Well, well, thank you for that. That, that really helps. And, um, Director Kemp, I think your discussion about Midtown is, uh, uh, really relevant. I'm usually kind of a big picture person. I really like things very systematically. That's, that's my inclination. Um, but, you know, having lived in Nashville and sat on that side of the room during the Midtown study, I know there, obviously we had hoped that we would get transit. We did, uh, sort of more generalized upzoning. There was a lot of community interest at that time in historic preservation for historic buildings that existed in Midtown at that time. Uh, I think the planning department worked with the Historic Zoning Commission and appealed to those property owners of those great properties multiple times and there were no-takers. And so sometimes, uh, uh, we, we still hope people are complaining about we're losing these buildings. And I know that the planning department and the Historic Zoning Commission staff asked repeatedly to try to find some way of incentivizing preservation of those great historic buildings. And the property owners didn't agree to that. And so kind of what we got with Midtown is, to your point, a, a certain bulk zoning standard. Um, we still have the departments that look at, you know, sidewalk requirements and things like that. But, um, we, we got, uh, kind of bulk standards for density. We did not get a housing affordability. We didn't get historic preservation. And sadly, we also didn't get transit. So using that blanket approach, like, uh, you know, we, we didn't get a lot of things that were really important to the community. Uh, we did get some much-needed housing and hotels and offices and things like that. But some of those important planning and community goals were not met through the, through the plan. Not that that's a fault on any of the staff. We tried very hard. But you know what, what I hear from community members about Midtown is like, oh God, another glass box. You know what I mean? And so that's one of the things I, I wanted to make sure that we're just not going to have another, just another glass box. And of course, these, um, buildings as designed, you know, do include glass, certainly, but, but it is distinctive architecture, I feel like. Um, um, you know, originally on this site was Captain Ryman's home, right? And we're, we're not going to get that back. And I think that it's important that if we're not going to get that back, that what we get is something that's very memorable and very thoughtful. And I feel like this plan is. One of the things that I was really drawn to, um, is the, the view of the park that sort of looks at and frames the beautiful Second Empire style house across the street. You know what I mean? It's like, it doesn't blend with or match that house, but it really respects and references that and showcases that in a good way, I thought. There's just a lot of details about that that I think are really, uh, very thoughtful and will emphasize and within their contrast will emphasize and sort of show off some of the existing historic buildings that do exist. So I think that's all really good. Um, you know, i- in terms of, um, uh, I'm sympathetic to neighbors that, you know, one house was, or a building was built during, with one set of standards and that it seems like they're, they're potentially changing for one next door. But, you know, I would say that if someone were to build a seven-story building on this, it would be, it could, I mean, City Lights is actually very well-designed also. So, I mean, it could have a good design, but it would still block views. It would still do a lot of those things. You'd still have construction noise. You'd still have, hopefully, underground parking if you have parking at all. So I, I think that, uh, the, the trade-offs of getting something pretty spectacular on this site that creatively incorporates some neat open space, but also really kind of showcases actually the, the historic buildings nearby is worth granting a site-specific plan for, for this location. I also can't help but reference the work that we're doing along the riverfront generally. Uh, obviously, hopefully, we get, uh, design going pretty soon with Wharf Park, which would be within walking distance of this site. Uh, and obviously everything going on with the East Bank. Um, I, I think this ties in very well. It steps back a little bit from some of those historic buildings. Uh, but the way that it steps back from the river a little bit as you are getting more toward a more of a downtown area, I, I think this is appropriate, uh, in the way that it steps back from the riverfront and from some of those historic buildings as you get closer and closer to a more of a downtown feel. So I, I'm inclined to support it with that assurance that we will get something very, very similar to this design because I would hate to just grant a blanket approval of something that might not be as high-quality. But thank you.
Commissioner, I'm going to go to Commissioner Lawson so I don't get confused.
I'm sorry.
Have to look this way and then that way. Commissioner Lawson.
It's not a whole lot I can add to the discussion already. Uh, I think the staff has done a great job. I think the applicant has. It's the, it's, uh, it is the, the same situation where you have something developing in a, in a neighborhood that is totally different from the neighborhood and you get, I don't want that. Uh, we need the housing. We need, we got thousands of people who are coming in here for jobs. Where are they going? Are we going to continue to grow or do we say, put a stop sign up outside on I-40 and 24 and everywhere else saying, don't come to Nashville for a job anymore because you'll have to sleep under the bridge? So I, I, I think developments of this kind are, are timely. Uh, it is good and, uh, when the time is right, I'd like to make the motion.
Mr. Haynes?
So I happen to disagree with my fellow commissioners. Um, very rarely do I disagree with the planning staff. And I think this is a critical time in our city. We need to pause our height bonus process. Um, this is, this is a great, beautiful project. It's in the wrong location. This body has entrusted me as your designated Parks Board. I was in a Parks Board meeting Tuesday and they presented the update on the Fort Eglie master plan. One of the principles of that plan is to protect the view sheds. The risk we take if we approve this kind of density, it's going to permeate through Rutledge Hill on a case-by-case basis. And we're going to lose the views that they talk about protecting at Fort Eglie. The discussion has been about lack of green space. I, I disagree completely. We're talking about Wharf Park and all the money that we're going to spend there. We're talking about Fort Eglie. We've got Ascend Amphitheater. We've got a ton of green space. And quite honestly, you can design beautiful projects with greenways, parks, wide streets with lower density. It does, you don't have to have this, this verticality here. So I, I think this board needs to think seriously about the height density process and we need to pause.
Thank you. Commissioner Sins?
I thank you, Commissioner, because as you know, Commissioner Haynes and I don't often agree on much, but I really appreciate your comments because I didn't want to be the first one to say this. Um, if, if any of you have ever read City Growth and Values, I think that's exactly where we are as a city right now. We've got to stop and kind of consider what are the values we're trying to do. My concern is that we are quickly, I think much, and this is my own voice, and I may get in trouble for this, as you know I do, but that SPs and this kind of exceptions are becoming the rule. And that can't happen. We need, we've got great people sitting up here. We've got a great staff. We may have one of the world's best staffs. We can do better than this. We can come up with what are the rules. Our city is making a deliberate move and if you watch people and talk to them toward horizontal living, but we have no standards for what that means. If we're going to expect people to actually live horizontally, then there are clear things that we ought to, as many nations already do, many big cities do, require, just like we require when we rezone in a neighborhood, just as we require trees. There is, in my opinion right now, there's regulatory policies that, and, that exasperate the inherent conflict as we're beginning to face in a rapidly growing city. Those policies really need to be discussed and defined. I'm not against this project at all. I just think it's a, I think it's a beautiful project and I actually think our city needs this. I'm more concerned that we are making an exception the rule. And we need to be very careful about doing that. I think the conflict that is, we're seeing is around particularly land use and the complex transactions that happen with people and the values. When we go to this much heights, then what do we expect of them? Yeah, pretty design, that's great. I like a building that's pretty. I hope we have some green space, but what else? We are creating a horizontal neighborhood. And what do we expect in that neighborhood to be? Many cities our size actually have really good rules establishing what is required. And I don't even mind going along with the staff on this one, except I think if we don't stop and do exactly what Commissioner Haynes just said, we're setting ourselves up where the exceptions which can create growth and creativity are going to give way to jeopardizing our values in the neigh, in, in this city. And I don't like the process. And I'll probably get some kind of ethics for this, but that's where I am.
May I just, one thing I would say, and I rarely, uh, disagree with two commissioners. I do want to put on the record, and if council wants to speak to this as well, it's important that if we've published rules that we expect the community to respond to in a process that we abide by them. And if the sense of the commission is, you would rather us do larger study areas, I believe I've laid out the worry with doing that, we should do that and notice it and let folks know that that's what we're doing. Um, and that way there is transparency, um, in what we're, in our objectives. But sort of making a policy that suggests the commission should put a pause on during an inter, you know, I, I just want to caution that that's a concern. Okay. Sorry.
I'd like to just add quickly. I think the kind of horizontal rules that I've seen in other major cities and across the world actually can do case-by-case, but also have the rules for defining what the heck are we doing here beside making it look nice and have some green space? Those are two, but we need a lot more clarity about what we're approving.
Mr. Henley?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Um, I've got, I've got a whole lot of notes, um, and thoughts, but I'll try to be succinct. Um, I think first, I, and I'll do something that I think is important. I want to address the, the residents from City Lights who've taken their time consistently to come here and represent not only their interest, but the interest of, of their fellow residents. I think it's, it's something that we sometimes, we take for granted because a lot of times, you know, this is what we do as, as commissioners. We expect people to show up and we expect them to both be for and against. But I think you guys, not necessarily all in the most professional manner addressed us, but I think you did address us and you did make your points. And I think by the last two commissioners, you, you can rest assured that you were heard. Um, I'd like to echo what they're saying, you were heard. I think there is, um, you know, I often challenge our city in, in how we communicate with our residents and, and make it known that we don't necessarily do a good job all the time when we're, when we're dealing with the pace at which our city is growing and the, and the ways we need to address our, our citizens. And so I think you guys have made a point that we've not done a good job and that there's something that we can do to improve that. So I just wanted to address that first and foremost. Um, but there's some other things that I want to address that were, that were said by, for those who spoke against this. I think Lucy definitely addressed the thinking and there was probably nobody more appropriately to do so. Um, with that in terms of how we, how we kind of got here today and, and the thought process of not doing a, a, a large swath change to zoning, because you can, you can have other impacts that you may also like a lot less than what you're getting right now. And I know it's hard to put And I know it's hard to put up a comparison of what-if versus what you see today, because what-if is fictitious, and what you see today, you've had a chance to digest and build opinions about. But I do think it's important to know that Nashville's growing, right? Our city's going to go vertical as much as we may not want it to. It's going to happen, and you guys are in downtown, so it's going to happen to you first. Right? It's just, it is what it is. You know, I think MDHA reviewed this plan. They gave their approval to it. MDHA is a body that governs a lot of things that are immediately adjacent to you guys and throughout downtown. You know, they, they let you guys know the direction of things a few years ago when they approved the Hensler project that's going right on the river in Roanoke Hill, right? One of the most historic locations in Nashville, and around the river, and you were going to get 20 stories. Then you're going to get 25. I think, I think it's 32 now. I'm not sure, but I think those kind of things are evident. And again, you know, I think Lucy said something, I think she said it in a better way than I would have, would have put it, but the rules are out there. The developers and the owners, they're, they're responding to the tools that they have. The height bonus program is one of those things. I think it sounds like we need to look at how to better define that. Maybe there's a rubric or something that can be utilized so at least the people who are laymans and aren't on this side of the, of the table can understand it and point to it and say, "Oh, okay, at least I get a better feel for it." And also, we allow you to better prepare yourselves to challenge that, right, and take your position. So, I think that's something else that I wanted to say on the record. There was one comment that, a little tongue-in-cheek, I heard someone say that this isn't something that ULI would support, and probably the person best representing ULI in the city, I think that's not necessarily true. This is the kind of project, maybe not its placement, because that's what we're talking about a little bit, but the design is fantastic, right? I mean, this is the kind of project that wins awards. It'll win award locally if it's built and the way it's designed. It may win one regionally and maybe nationally if we can actually pull it off. And it, and it does the things that we saw in the video, right, or in these slides. That's always the thing. You've got to deliver on what you put in front of people. But I also think, too, some of the things that we haven't addressed that were put up here on the slide, and Nora, I don't know if you can go to it, but it, but it talked about all the requirements of NDOT. And, you know, Nashville's a city that has a lot of infrastructure needs, and we're a city that's positioned ourselves to place that infrastructure burden on developers. And so, as we keep talking about things that aren't necessarily just, you know, open space and what's pretty, there's an extensive amount of things that developments of this scale and things that go into downtown have to do and have to deal with, and they're providing a lot of those things that their cost. And so, a lot of times, the public doesn't recognize the amount of infrastructure that needs to go into some developments. So, I just wanted to take the time to highlight that as an additional thing that's being done, right, that this group is taking on. The same with the second and P-20 project. There's a lot of things that happen when you address some of these older sites in our, in our downtown core. The last thing I wanted to mention, you know, Brian, Brian, Commissioner Tibbs brought it up, and he said he wanted to specifically address how the park is treated. And I think there's one thing, whether, you know, putting a pretty park up here, but making sure that it's something that actually will benefit the community, that it is actually designed to be utilized by any and all, is really important. This is my opinion. I think I'm kind of starting to venture into the territory with, with, with Dr. Sims here, but this isn't a type of project that lowers your property value. Somebody being able to walk out the door and live across the street from something like this, if it's there, it increases your property value, right? I don't know what they're going to put on the ground floor in terms of retail and services and amenities, but, you know, if you, if you equate property value just to views, then yeah, I get what you're saying, but you're still going to have a completely tremendous experience when you step outside of your door, and you're still going to be in downtown Nashville. So, really, you probably could have a ton of bricks sit across from you, and your property value is going to go up the way things are happening right now. But other than that, I think, you know, we, we heard a lot of what was said, and I think there's something about the precedence of the, of how the process works, but particular to this project, I don't necessarily object. So, I would just like to say that before I turn it back over.
Thank you. Good, good point. I guess everyone has had a chance to comment. Any, any other discussion?
I forgot one thing. I looked down, and it was one note I didn't tick off. You know, we, we also, we talked about the open space and the parks, but we also do want to be a city when we talk about design perspective and how we look at things and the human experience. We don't want to have mega blocks, right? And so, there are some, there are some projects that you're starting to see built, particularly in Sobro, that don't have this level of design detail. They're mega blocks, right? You can't, you have to walk around them, right? They're not appealing. If you're not driving your car to park in the garage and go up into your apartment, there's no reason for you to go there. That's not, that's not what we really want our city to be, at least I don't think so. I mean, I don't know, you guys can come to a future planning commission and say, "Well, we'd actually rather just walk out the door and walk completely around a big box," right? I think that's the kind of thing that we need to consider when we say no to things is the alternative. We really do need to have some perspective of what that looks like. And I think Nora and whoever on the team put these imagery together to show us kind of alternative versus. I just want to point that out. I think that's something very good that we did here today.
So, let me address, I'm not suggesting that we go to the Rutledge Hill district between here and Fort Eglie and review the entire district. I think that would be difficult. However, I think we should pause and review this bonus height program. Going from six to seven stories to 29, 32, and 38, and having five and six times the bonus height, I don't think that was the intention of the bonus height program when it was drafted. So, I would like to move for an indefinite deferral for staff to review the bonus height criteria and come back to this body with a recommendation, because otherwise, what's going to happen? So, we're going to approve this. The next person's going to overpay for the next piece of land beside it. They're going to come in, and instead of six and seven times, they're going to want eight or nine times the bonus height, and we're going to have to deal with that as a body. So, I make a motion for an indefinite deferral to review the bonus height.
What's a proper motion? Do we have a second? May I offer a comment?
Yes, you may. Okay, let me offer a suggestion, since I think my concern would be that we've advertised a height modification process, which is different from bonuses, right? And so, we're, we've presented rules that the community is following. And so, my suggestion would be to go ahead and vote on this case, and then at the conclusion of it, if the commission agrees and wants the staff to evaluate the program, then we need to do that and advertise it. And so, then it'll be really clear based on the comments. I'm going to write down everything you say that needs to be evaluated. We'll prepare a memo, and we'll present that to the commission. I'm just concerned about doing that as a kind of part of this case. So, I would just offer that as an alternative to the suggestion. And it sounds like maybe you're...
Okay. Thank you for the suggestion, Director. I clearly hear, you know, Commissioner Haynes' position. We think we should consider a height modification, but, you know, Commissioner Lawson always says you cannot move the goalpost in the middle of the game. So, I think if we were to defer indefinitely, we are moving the goalpost, because the developer and team did precisely, you know, our stuff and follow the precise direction as we presented today. So, I think we should vote one way or the other, and then next project, we should consider if we put moratorium of what the right approach for us. But I think, you know, at this point, for this project, for us to do indefinite deferral is not a business practice for us.
Okay, so, we did not get a second on that motion. So, at this point, we are still in discussion. Commissioner Sims.
I think what Commissioner Haynes is doing is really smart, and I really hear you. And I also really love, Commissioner Blackshear always asks the hard questions that makes us think this way, you know? When is too tall? When is tall too tall? And I think, but I also want to see us begin to put some characteristics and definition to what we're expecting in these neigh... I mean, these really are not just tall buildings if they're done well. They are truly vertical neighborhoods. And so, good people like these and the one we did before know that, and they know what they're doing, and they know how to define that. So, we could get their help in saying, "What is this?" Because if people start coming behind us wanting the same thing, then we will know what it takes to create a really good vertical neighborhood. So, I think somewhere in this work that Commissioner Haynes has spurred us to do, we need to think about that and look at that.
So, other, oh, sorry, Commissioner Henley.
I think, well, Commissioner Johnson pretty much said what I was going to say, but I think also not just thinking about this case and moving the goalpost. I think it is important. Doesn't have to be disclosed here, but I think I would like to request of the, of the director and staff, if there are other projects that have similar conversations going right now, that we address just this kind... I don't even know what the outcome's going to be, but they should be informed, because there are people that are drawing and doing work based on what is out there right now. So, I think we do need to have a stance of notification of anyone who's, who brought something to, to planning intending to use this program as it is today.
So noted. I'm happy to prepare. I mean, I don't yet know, I was hoping after the vote on this case, we could entertain the things that need to be discussed, and we can hold a work session also, but I will happily, we, we will notify anyone who has entered the height modification process that the program is under review.
Well, and kind of adding to that, I think we also, and maybe this is segueing too far advanced, but we want to think about all of the public benefits. So, we've now got two projects that are bringing us, you know, proposing to bring an acre of parkland. That's great. We've talked about the need for green space. This is probably a good chunk of green space in this area if these both go forward. There's other public benefit that we need to consider. So, but we can talk about that in the, if we go forward. So, other, any other discussion? And if not, I will see if I can solicit another motion from a commissioner. Commissioner Lawson, you said you would like to make a motion.
I move that we adopt the staff recommendation, and once this, we, we vote this up or down, whatever the outcome is, I think that the executive director has made some very valid points in how we go forward with the information she's heard from all of the commissioners. Personally, I'd like to see it in a separate meeting where we can fight and do everything else, but...
That can happen, too.
That can happen, too.
Proper motion. Do we have a second?
A second, maybe not all the rest of, but I definitely second.
Okay. Any discussion? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, let's do a show of hands and an eye. So, we have one, two, three, four, five in favor. All opposed? Three. What, you're opposed?
I think it's five to three.
Okay. Five to three. Motion carries. Five, three. Okay, we have, we'll give everyone a moment to clear. So, Director, while we're, well, before we start our next case, I think we have a direction of what we want to do in terms of...
Yes.
I think in addition, I think it would just be helpful to think about some guidance to address Commissioner Blackshear's question on how, how we make decisions on increments with the bonus height and, you know, what we need to do to strengthen it going forward, and then, you know, thinking about this area holistically.
Sure. I'll do, we'll do.
Okay. We can get it. We have one more case to get through tonight, so if you guys don't mind taking conversation to the hallway. Thank you.
You might need to bang your guy.
I know. Thank you, Lisa. All right, I think we are ready for our, our final item, item 40.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Seth Harrison. I'm with the planning department, and I'll be presenting item number 40. This request is for a concept plan of 60 cluster lots along the east side of John Hager Road. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Currently, the site is zoned RS-15, single-family residential, with the surrounding area consisting of mostly RS-15 and RS-10 located to the west. As shown, the proposed concept plan includes 12 lots fronting John Hager Road, with the remaining lots to be fronting new proposed roads. The planning commission has adopted subdivision regulations that include standards for specific transects. Since this is located within the T3 suburban neighborhood evolving policy, regulations within Chapter 3 were utilized in the evaluation of this application. This site is utilizing the by-right cluster lot option, which allows a reduction of lot size, but does not allow more density than what would be allowed in RS-15 zoning district by dedicating open space. The proposed plan meets all the criteria as required for cluster lots. The cluster lot option requires the site to be at least 150,000 square feet, and this site is over 1 billion square feet. 15% open space is required, and 33% has been provided, and this site would allow for a maximum of 60 lots, and 60 lots are proposed. Staff recommends to approve with conditions since the site implies, oh, my bad. Site recommends to approve with conditions that the site comply with all conditions and requirements of metro agencies.
So, I will go ahead and open the public hearing as the applicant here. Thank you for hanging out with us for a short five hours.
Thanks, Madam Chairman, Councilmember Withers, Commissioners and staff. I'm Roy Dale. I'm representing this development. I'm office at 518 Heather Place, Nashville, Tennessee. And Adam Sager actually designed this with Dale &amp; Associates. He's not here today, but I'm just taking over for him. This subdivision was submitted to the planning commission. It went through your perfunctory review process. It's been recommended by all the departments. It meets all your standards and all your requirements. Commissioner Sims, we've had several, several committee meetings. We've worked with the council member, and so, I think we've done our job there. I know there's one individual who wants to speak, probably about connectivity, which, you know, is something that a lot of the community doesn't understand necessarily. We understand the importance of that, but I think he wants to address you about the connectivity. But we appreciate what you do. I listened to all this today, was quite impressed, and I'm trying to get your vote, okay? I think you, you know, you have certain standards, and we meet all those, so I'm not concerned about that. But I want to tell you that this is a diverse group of people. It's very impressive, all the different knowledge that you bring. It's unfortunate, though, somehow, that you're hampered a little bit by outdated, outdated land use policies. I see that a lot, and it's a struggle for us in the development community. I know it's a struggle for you as well, and it's something I think needs to be addressed. But anyway, this development, this proposal has been approved by all the different departments that meet your perfunctory requirements. I would ask for you to support it and approve it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone speaking in support of this project? Anyone speaking in opposition? Hi, please come forth. You all have two minutes and state your name and address, and thank you for hanging out with us tonight.
Well, my pre-go-to-bed nap's over with. So, anyway. My name is Larry Shelton. I live at 5033 Megan Drive. That's the Wind Song subdivision just to the south of the project. Naturally, we oppose the project just out of general principles, because we like the deer and the, and the wild turkeys that keep running through there, but we did realize that it's not our property, so we can't really say much about that. But we do have one contention that we like to bring to your attention and hopefully modify, and that's the connection to the Megan Court. You can bring back their project diagram. Down there to the south, you see that little road there? It connects into what's called Megan Court, which was, I'm one of the original homeowners of this subdivision. That Megan Court was designed so that Lot 5, which is right next to Megan Court, could have a driveway. We've always been under the oppression... We've always been under the impression that we own the property just past that extension. So basically, we're, we feel like you're intruding upon our property by connecting the two. Our real concerns besides that is naturally our own safety and security by allowing more traffic to flow through our dead-end street, which the police department basically says, has told us, makes us a little bit safer as far as people breaking into cars, having more than one way out of the neighborhood. I mean, we're only 24 homes. We all feel secure, our children play in the street. In fact, we were planning on putting a playground right next to that extension, but now we couldn't possibly do that if the traffic flow would increase. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one, are you here speaking in opposition by any chance? No? Oh, stormwater, sorry. All right.
And I'm not in opposition.
All right.
Please in favor? I'm in favor.
All right, so if the applicant would like to use your two minutes for rebuttal?
No, we're good.
You're good? Okay, then I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And Commissioner Blackshear, I'm going to call on you, because you're very good at navigating those kinds of questions.
Well, to address the neighbor's concern, what's the property rights right below Megan Court?
Hi, so that, the plat, to the south, the subdivision to the south, was platted with a stub street that deadends into this property to the north, and so the new proposal is connecting into an existing platted roadway. So it was intended, when the, when the original subdivision to the south was created, it was intended with a connection. There was an intentional connection to the north and to the east.
Okay, well, I guess you heard that, neighbor.
All I do is divide what the original contractor's proposal was to fill in with what the home, you know, the city's even put that aside, just a desert. Plus, I understand that if it was a stub street, that was true, but it didn't find as such by signage and notification when we bought the homes, and that is not good either.
Sounds like someone just maybe dropped the ball on that. And the other item, just about the connectivity, I mean, we've seen this obviously a lot regarding just opening up the flow in a neighborhood that did not anticipate the flow being there. A lot of times, we talk about fire safety, and that's the reason it's being done. If you guys want to touch on that a little bit?
Sure. So the existing subdivision of the south has 24 lots. The proposed subdivision to the north, the new subdivision that you're reviewing, is 60 lots. It has an access from the primary road, John Hager, and then this second access from the existing platted stub street. The fire code would indicate, and then there are additional stub streets that we are proposing to the north and to the south, which is standard, you know, sort of good planning principles when we're looking at subdivisions. So this proposed subdivision does need two accesses, given the number of lots, to meet the fire code regulations.
Well, given those explanations and the satisfaction of the other requirements when doing these types of subdivisions, I'd be in favor. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I do understand, I would prefer wild turkey than, you know, wild neighbors. So I do understand the concern, but I think, you know, like you said, this subdivision meets all the requirement, and of course, you know, sometimes neighbor would love to have fewer neighbors, but again, we do need more housing. And so, and even though maybe neighbor don't like some connectivity, because you are so used to a dead end, but sometimes, you know, if you see the long future, having stub road and connectivity helps. Not today, not tomorrow, but years down in the road, some, you know, environment and surrounding area has changed. So I think those future planning stub road is important, so I support staff recommendation.
Thank you. Councilman Withers?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Appreciate the explanation from staff. You know, I'm a big proponent of connectivity. I live in an urban neighborhood that has a street grid, and we definitely, I don't care what street it is, you have cars that find their way down your street. But that's, that also helps to avoid congestion if you have multiple ways to get anywhere, frankly. So that's of a benefit. One of the experiences that I've had as a council member and a long-term community neighborhood association leader is that I've been through thousands of community meetings where the police present things, and we definitely have car break-ins in East Nashville. And sometimes people think, well, this is only happening in East Nashville, and the police say, no, this is not only happening all across Davidson County, but you know, our community affairs sergeant shared that he lives in a cul-de-sac neighborhood in Rutherford County, and they have people break into cars out there. Density and connectivity don't necessarily cause or create crime, and I understand that people feel more secure sometimes if there are not people going down their street, but that there's just not a correlation there. And so, you know, I'm in support of the staff recommendation for this. What I would also share is that turkey and wildlife definitely will resettle into neighborhoods once they're built out. I know the Old Hickory neighborhood has lots and lots of wild turkey, and we sometimes have, where Commissioner Farr and I live, have deer within a block or so of our houses, and we're a mile and a half off the Greenway. So wildlife will reestablish themselves, don't worry about that. But I understand the concern from the neighbor, but it's just, when you look at the connectivity standpoint and the benefits of connectivity, that, that this needs to meet the standard in order to have fire protection. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Henley?
Very similar comments to my fellow commissioners and the council member. I think, I mean, just looking at it, I kind of already knew that was going to be what the conversation's going to be about, but understanding it's a requirement for, to me, fire code, I think is kind of the deciding factor. I do think this is a great opportunity, though, to talk with Councilmember Evans about potentially a traffic calming program, because you do have a dead-end street. I know how families and communities operate, and we have a dead-end street. The street itself becomes a playground, because everyone knows their neighbor, and everyone knows to watch for kids. Introducing 60 new households, and it creates a bit of a different feel. So I think that was what I would recommend as step two, although that's not what you kind of asked about, but I think that's a good opportunity to have that conversation with the council member.
Commissioner Sims?
Mr. Dale, thank you for having three community meetings. It obviously helped a lot, and I really appreciate it, so I like this, and I have no further questions.
Commissioner Haynes? Commissioner Lawson?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Motion to approve. Second.
All right, proper motion and second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. So we are down to our other business. Commissioner Johnson, anything you would like to share from Historic?
No, Madam Chair, no report this evening.
Okay. Commissioner Haynes?
Parks is busy. We are now, we have a study committee on field, baseball fields for the disabled, which is much needed in our community. One has been approved in Warner Parks, that's causing some controversy, and so we're going to study, should we consider moving it elsewhere in the city and combining it with a park, not just a baseball field? So we'll keep you posted.
Interesting. Executive Committee, I don't know, I was not told by the chair that there was anything on the executive committee, other than this is our only meeting this month, so we will not reconvene until January. And let's see, Director, any update from you?
Just a couple things. First, Greg Claxton.
Yeah.
What are we going to, what are we going to do?
Send him his email?
That guy, yes, to have gone through, I worked with him over the last two weeks really, really intensively, and only did like half of what he was doing. We've been on the phone morning, noon, and night, and he really put the effort in. I hope y'all caught the press conference that the mayor held regarding Second Avenue recovery. I am unbelievably proud of the work that Metro did generally, our collaboration with Historic to solve some very profound and difficult problems, and doing it in a way that kept pace with the recovery. And so we're not all there yet. We've got a lot of work to do, but I think we've hit some important milestones. And then the second, our third thing is, we held a really successful meeting on the East Bank Plan, and I want to thank Councilman Withers and Councilman Parker for their support. They stood up on stage with me and answered questions, which is the sign of a really great council member. And so I'm at a point now where I think we would like to bring the plan back to the commission to review, and I'll talk to the chair to see if that's best done in a work session or in an open session. Unlike a lot of plans, there aren't a ton of sort of approval items before you on this here, because it already meets Nashville Next, but there is some street work that we will seek your review and approval of with the major and collector's street plan. But that feels like such a minor segment compared to the whole effort. So some really exciting things going on with those projects just last week. So thank you so much. I wish you a happy and relaxing break, winter break, and we will see you in early January, and look forward to more fun to come. So thank you. Then thank you for serving as Chairwoman tonight.
Sure, thank you, Director. We still have our legislative update, Councilwoman Withers. Are you going to get our rezone, our redistricting pass, Councilman? No?
Well, that's what I was going to say, is all of council has been really focused on that, so we're all like, what are we going to talk about now? We also passed an amended capital spending plan on Tuesday that does include some funding for the East Bank, includes funding for lots of great projects, does include parking for the Nashville Zoo, which is desperately needed, but council members are able to negotiate to try to add in some additional pedestrian improvements and traffic calming in the Knoll's Overold Corridor, so I think that's a really good collaboration. Pretty excited to see all of the great things that are to come out of this capital spending plan, and appreciate Director Kempf coming down and speaking to council and advocating and saying and letting the council know why some of these funding buckets and categories are so important to continue making this a great city. So thank you, and happy holidays to everyone.
So thank you all, and thank you, I mean, a lot, a big thanks to the staff. You guys have worked incredibly hard in the last month, but all year, so thank you.
It's been nuts, yes.
Yeah, it's been nuts, so...
It's been really hard. The last month has been intense.
I hope you all get a little holiday break. And with that, I will see if there's a motion to adjourn?
I'm moving.
All right, thanks.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.